Aaron, are we recording? Okay, let's go ahead and get started. It's okay if Tim's a little bit late. We've got some stuff to go through before we do votes. So, let's go ahead and get started. I've asked Kim Rodella to give our invocation after which Addie, our special guest, Addie Barr, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay?
Oh dear, kind gracious, and my father, we're so grateful to be here today, to be able to gather from others, residents, and other cities as well. We ask you in this moment to please be with us as we make decisions that affect us as a local government and as residents as well, and that we also take into consideration all those opinions and thoughts around us. And we so humbly thank thee for all that thou has given us and say thee sings in the name of thy son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Addie. Hey Tyler, can you put the mic up on the podium? All right, with that, we now have our public comment portion of the meeting. If there's anyone that would like to address us on any subject, feel free to come up, state your name.
Would you mind turning just that green button on that microphone?
She did.
The push?
There you go, thank you.
Yeah, okay, my name's Carrie Bushman. And my husband and I in May found out that we could purchase, we could petition the city to purchase open space behind our homes, which is an issue that we've been having for quite some time. And we've discussed with many members of the council. And at that time, we had had a discussion in a meeting with our neighbors who had also had their own issues that they had mentioned and shared with us over time. And two of them are going to be here today, but I don't know if they're going to be able to make it. If they are, we hope that we can hear from them. But in the meantime, it was decided in that meeting we would wait and postpone until May of 2022 to petition the city. And after May, about a week later, our sprinkler system broke. We've had issues with our lawn for the last 18 years. We had some floods from the irrigation canal from the north of that that washed away some topsoil. We've had problems keeping our grass up and have had weed issues since then that have been extremely, I guess bothersome. So, we've had some issues with that, and those were resolved. Anyway, we were waiting. I apologize that I'm not well-prepared. I just found out I could come and do this today. So, I appreciate your patience with me. Anyway, so, our lawn has not been saved. My husband's going to show you a picture. He's welcome to take it around. The lawn's completely dead. We haven't been able to do anything with it. And we'd like to make a decision now and are asking for you to listen to us this year on that petition because we need to take care of our landscaping. But it also will affect our neighbors or does affect them in that decision. And we want to make sure that they're taken care of and that we're not stepping on anyone's toes by petitioning the city at this particular point in time to purchase up to five feet of the property when they have other expectations and other desires that they would like to do in order to eliminate the issues and problems that they're having with the walking space and the open space. So, that is our request. I'm going to let my husband talk for a minute because he does better than Mike, so.
I'll try to sum it up a little more simply. We live at 9992 North, 5680 West. Just north of us is the American Fork Irrigation Ditch. Prior, when the properties north of us were undeveloped, we had a number of issues with the spring runoff and the ditch flooding. And we had at least three separate incidences where our trampoline, that's an in-ground trampoline, actually became a retention pond. And on one such flood, our neighbors woke us up in the middle of the morning and our entire backyard was underwater. If you look closely at our pictures, you've got the walking path along the north, and then you drop off several inches onto our property. At one point in time, that was level. The topsoil's been washed away. And no matter how much water we put on it, because the topsoil is gone, it's not going to grow grass or anything else back there. On the east side of us is also a walking trail, which has some city property to it, and I'll quickly show you some pictures. But we've put off our landscaper. We're prepared to re-landscape the backyard. Like my wife said, the sprinklers are now, the sprinklers have gone bad. We would like to landscape the entire backyard, but we're petitioning the city if we can buy the city portion of the property. We moved into the property. There's, the city hasn't done anything with the property in the entire 18-plus years we've been there. At one point in time, the city did come in and plant two trees on the city portion, but did not put any water to those trees. And those trees are now dead. Well, one is dead and the other is quickly dying in the drought since we're not watering our backyard. So, we petitioned to be able to purchase that property or do an intent to purchase. If we can do an intent to purchase and purchase the property next year when it's filed, file something so we can go ahead and do that because we would like to move the trampoline a little bit further back onto what's technically the city property now. Yeah, we have planted grass and have maintained it for 18 years, but we did not put our sprinkling system on it. And it's just not efficient to be able to water and get the water to that area without being able to move the sprinkling lines onto that property. So, I'll quickly walk around and show you some pictures.
Do you have any questions?
Can't make a decision tonight on something that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
We just, they can't.
Sounds good. We do want to make a suggestion. We think it would be better, even with the five feet that's back there, we would have the same problem issue that we have right now because we don't have the city maintaining it. They're not going to, it's not getting maintained. I don't know if it's going to ever get maintained. So, we discussed it with our neighbors, and the choice that everyone would like to make unanimously is to buy that portion of the walking path. We have walking path on our right-hand side. We don't want to touch that. We'd like to keep that there. But we'd like to buy that portion of it and fence it completely. It will also give us the privacy that we need and desire. Our neighbors have a lot of small children that live on that first house on that corner. And I think I'd like you to hear their reasons as to why they would like to purchase that. And hopefully, they'll be here soon. If not, later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Shields.
I'm sorry, this probably comes across as a pest in, you know, but.
Excuse me, so would you mind stating your name, please?
Oh, Craig Shields.
Thank you.
Over in Pheasant Drive, we're the neighbor to the new road on the side that's not taken care of. First, the request can send over the city crews to cut down the wheat and take out the graffitied mailpots, of course. Seems simple enough, but nobody's been able to get there. We cut down what we can, but.
You're talking about where the detention basin will be, or?
Just the whole area there.
Okay.
The second point is, we appreciate we have met with the city engineer and appreciate that there were some efforts there with respect to the proposal. It's exciting in a lot of ways, but need to be aware that, at least as presented at us, it's a massive change from the city because Todd Trainor told us that the city was, had made the decision to own all of its riderways. So, knowing history of people and how it comes and goes in the city council, I wanted you to be aware of that. Secondly is to be aware of all of the piping and other constraints that there's going to be on building there. That's not on the map that was shown to us. And because of the nature of the pipes, I think it takes away a lot of the billing opportunities there. And another point on that is with the wall, probably affects some sound, but for somebody to try to build a two-story house right there, it's going to be, I don't think it's buildable personally. We're getting an inordinate amount of noise from the highway, and I can't imagine it would be that close, particularly on a second story. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Madeline Kidd, and I'll be 15 in September. And I'm going into ninth grade at Timberline Middle School this upcoming school year. I've decided to compete in the Miss Utah Outstanding Teen Competition this year. I'm a resident of Highland, and I live on Atlas Drive. The Miss Utah Outstanding Teen Competition is a branch of the Miss America Competition Organization, which is the largest provider for scholarships for teens and women. Utah has an open state competition, meaning I do not need to compete in a local competition to compete in the Miss Utah Outstanding Teen Program. Since Highland does not hold a local competition, I will be going as an outrage contestant, and they have given me the title of Miss Highland's Outstanding Teen. I've come before you this evening to let you know that I would love to be of service in my hometown in any way. I am not here to ask for the recognition, but the council is so inclined, I would love to be recognized as Miss Highland's Outstanding Teen as the director of the Miss Utah Outstanding Teen Program suggested. I have a social impact initiative, and it's Read to Love. I enjoy reading, and I know the importance of reading at a young age. I believe as I learn to, as one learns to become a confident reader, they will be confident in other areas of their life as well. I would love to promote my social impact initiative by visiting elementary schools, volunteering my time at the library, and any way I can help the community. I know as I serve by reading, I will love the people I come in contact with. For my talent at the competition, I'll be performing a ballet variation on point. I started dancing when I was three years old, and I have been seriously studying for nearly 12 years. I am currently a student at Central Utah Ballet. And I'm also on the dance team at my school. My great-grandmother was raised in Highland, and she grew up in the log cabin that's at Heritage Park. Her name is Darlene Stice Van Rukhoven. I'm so grateful to live in this beautiful town and community. I hope that I will have your blessing, and please let me know where I can serve. I greatly appreciate your help and support and encouragement as I learn and grow into the woman I want to become. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Corinne, who's sitting there, is our events person. And she will talk to you afterwards and get your name, and we'll work with you on whatever we can do to be supportive.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming. That was a great job.
Thanks.
Hi.
Hi.
Adam Swirblow. Just wanted to say, we just moved here from California. Yeah, we're one of those people. Happy to be here in this beautiful city. Couple of things, I share the sentiment with my neighbors over here with their little strip of land that belongs to the city. I would too like to buy the little strip that sits on the back of my property. I don't quite have the same problems that they do, but I'd like to be able to put a permanent structure on that piece of property.
Where do you live?
North Lighthouse Drive.
Okay.
Up there by Beacon Hill, North Lighthouse.
And where in California?
I'm originally from New York, but I was living in Newport Beach, California, where I met my beautiful wife back there with my beautiful baby.
Yeah, I'm one of those people that came from California.
Oh, welcome. Thank you. It's a great place, right? Much larger than California.
Thirty minutes from where you are.
Sweet, all right, I love it. Second of all, I don't know what you call it, the disc golf park right there in Beacon Hill, there's no trash cans. I see water bottles and crap, sorry, everywhere. And I'd like to be able to have a place to throw stuff like, I don't know, dog poop or bottles, kids' sports drinks and things like that. You get guys built a nice, beautiful bathroom there. I figured a couple of trash cans around there. People come play disc golf all the time. They probably have water bottles or dog poop too that they'd like to throw away. So, just a.
Fair ask.
I know you're not, you can't make decisions in this meeting, but I felt it'd be all right to just ask for some trash cans, so.
Good ask.
That's it. Thanks.
Sure.
Come up, state your name.
Yes, I am Brian Wolfensberger. I live in the Windsor Park section. I know our neighbors Bushmans are going to be speaking here, and I want to come, A, to support them, but B, kind of talk about the issues that we've had as neighbors in that Windsor Park area, just with the open space. Now, I know I've heard a lot of comments here tonight. I just kind of want to reiterate a lot of that. With us, we've lived here for three and a half years, and it is evident to us, it is more of a safety concern than anything else. It is very evident that with all the blacktop that took place with the trails in the neighborhood and in the city, the only section that wasn't done was the one right directly behind our house and the one that probably needed it the most. And it's been over 10 years since that section was done. In fact, all the neighbors that live back there maintain the property where the city should be maintaining. So, we already maintain that. And it's evident that the resources from the city do not want to be put into this section back there. We have called personally, since we moved here three and a half years ago, four times to get the potholes filled in. We had our second kid that had a bike accident that required medical attention, which I contacted the city on. And it was, you know, a week later that the potholes were actually filled at that point. So, you know, it's a safety, and I know I've heard some talking points on the debris, you know, the animals, and it's become this dumping ground for people to come in. We've had lots of people walk into our property. They damaged our playground before, which required us to buy a second one. We've had things that have wandered off in the backyard. So, it's really a safety. And with four kids under the age of eight, you know, and a place to play, that is our main focus and our main concern. And since we're already maintaining the property and everybody behind that section, it is something that we would like to purchase and just simply maintain that we're already doing. So, again, those are just some of the concerns with our family. It just comes down to safety, not having that as a dumping ground and maintaining it that the city, you know, has not been doing. So, that being said, that's what I want to do with us.
May, can I just, where specifically, like, from the Bushmans, do you have just, I want to, you said there's a section of the asphalt trail, Ms.?
Yeah, yeah. It's probably a 50-yard section. I'm at Wellington Court, so right directly behind our house, there's five neighbors that share that path. And the city maintains one of the five. So, all four of the neighbors maintain the city's section behind us. So, that's, there's only one house where the city actually maintains and goes and mows.
Can you tell your exact address?
9949 North Wellington Court.
Is that on the south side of Windsor, Mary, or Window? Is it the south side?
We're on the south side of the cul-de-sac.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yeah. Right behind us, and you can see it. And in fact, you can see the blacktop and how it differs from everybody else's. But, you know, we talked to our neighbors. In fact, they said within 10 years, they have called and complained about the blacktop, and nothing has ever been done. So, again, it was my son that, you know, got injured, which prompted, you know, a stern call. Whoever handled my phone call did a very good job. And, you know, within a week, it was maintained. But again, it's just kind of putting a Band-Aid over a larger issue that's at hand.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then I get to, I'm up to bat. And Mark Thompson, you are not here. Marilyn Ritchie is. So, I'm going to come down and do these awards. Marilyn Ritchie, could you come up? Marilyn Ritchie was the mayor before I got on city council. And he, like other mayors, pushed hard to have a road get connected between Alpine Highway and Highland Boulevard. And it didn't. And for 40 years, it didn't. But some of the things that he did laid the groundwork for what followed so that we could eventually get that road in. And every year since I've been mayor, I have asked our staff that handles the fling to create pins emblematic of our theme for the year. So, last year's theme was "Our Story Unfolds." And so, Lynn has been a part of our story. And as mayor, I want to congratulate him for having endured. I'll give you this pin and this, a nice certificate that says, "Thank you for your tireless efforts as mayor to improve our city. You pressed forward with the East-West Connector Road during a time when many thought it could never happen. Your efforts laid the groundwork for subsequent events that would lead to the completion of the road in May of 2021. Your efforts on behalf of our residents have earned you a prominent page in our history." So, thank you, Lynn. Thanks for coming. And. If I could ask Adam to come back up. He'll be up here twice. He bought a home late last year.
Yeah, in December.
In December of last year. They had their first baby in April.
You got it.
And they waited to move here until after their baby came. So, I make random calls to new people that are moving to the city.
I think I called you.
In your case.
But it was random.
Randomly called you.
Well, anyway, I make random calls. So, one of us called each other. But I get new moving lists, and I'll pick people at random. I can't call everybody. And I call them. But we spoke, however we spoke. And sometimes I Facebooks people.
That was it, yeah, yeah.
Before I called them. And I think I did, and then we chatted. That's how we got together. And it turns out that Adam is the COO of The Chosen, a show that I absolutely love.
Who hasn't seen it?
Don't worry, sure. If you haven't, repent, because it's really, really good.
Seen it.
Got to watch it.
It's awesome. And so, Adam gets a Highland Hero Award too because, you know, I've talked to a lot of people in Highland and that enjoy the show, and it's having a really positive effect. So, let me read you what I put in his thing. So, I start off with a quote from President Washington. And it says, "Of all the dispositions and habits which lead to political prosperity, religion and morality are indispensable supports. In vain would that man claim the tribute of patriotism who should labor to subvert these great pillars of human happiness, these firmest props of the duties of men and citizens." That's one of my all-time favorite quotes. And while Adam is just a newcomer, we want to recognize you, your role in the television series that has already blessed the lives of many in Highland and millions around the world. Our nation was born following a religious revival called the Great Awakening, which occurred during a time when secular rationalism was being emphasized. Our founders recognized the hand of God in our struggle for independence and the development of our constitution. They also believed that morality and religion were essential to, were the essential underpinnings of our society. Thank you for fully sharing a message that encourages everyone to love one another and consequently will help preserve our nation. You are forever a part of our story. So, thank you, and you get a pin. And then your partner in crime.
Yes.
We'll call it that, overdid angel.
Yep. I'll relive that to her, thank you.
If you'll give that to her. And so, I want to thank him for moving to Highland. Great place with a new baby. And your contribution to our story by bringing The Chosen to the world and hopefully to Highland.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Mayor, man.
So, I have one question.
Yes.
No, it's fine. I'm just going to ask you quick. So, are you going to have the Savior give the Sermon on the Mount? I've watched every episode, and we watched the last one, but he just gets up to give it, but doesn't give it. Teaser, okay. And it's on BYU TV as well.
So, thank you. Now, on to presentations. So, with that, we'll start with Corinne and the fling.
Mayor and council, we're excited to come to you with a complete fling this year. We are thrilled to be able to do our traditional fling and not have to change anything this year. After a long year, almost a year and a half now, of having to keep people somewhat separated or isolated, we've chosen the theme "Reach" for a fling. And it includes reaching up, reaching out, and reaching beyond what we've done in the past. And we're kicking off. We're really excited to have our kickoff dinner at Mitchell Hollow Park. And as far as I know, this is one of the first city events to be held at Mitchell Hollow, which is a beautiful park with some really neat features that will really add to the feel. We're having kind of a block party feel. Dinner, games, a family band that's parents and their children. It's called Breakfast for Dinner. They're great. So, we hope everybody will come out to that and just get the, kind of getting the band back together, getting you out with your neighbors, being able to visit again freely. We have things like our rodeo, our art show, horseshoe and disc golf tournaments, kickboxing to help us reach beyond our limits, maybe our comfort zones. And we have our service projects where we'll be reaching out locally and globally. We have about four projects, and some of those are staying here local with school kits and things like that. And others include refugee mats and other kits like that. And then we've also got the Highland Games and Strongman Competition, which help us reach new heights. Everyone always asks about the caber toss, and yes, that is happening. Reach out to friends and neighbors as we have our chalk party for our teenagers. We hope they'll reach out to each other with a handful of chalk and have a great time with that. And our Kids Night, the library's hosting will be here at Splash Pad Park, and that is kind of a magic theme. And then on the Saturday of fling, we have our parade at our traditional route. No drive-through parade this year, which was great, but we're glad to be back to normal. And our vendor fair, live entertainment. And then a huge concert featuring a band called Synergy, which is fantastic. And they will lead up to our fireworks show that night. So, we hope that people will come and enjoy getting out with their neighbors at their comfort level. And we've got small and large events depending on what you'd like to participate in. The Fling Magazine hit homes a week or two ago, but we have copies here at City Hall if anybody needs one. And we're just thrilled.
For those that have babies, there's the baby celebration.
Yes, the, oh, I skipped that section, sorry. Yes, the baby celebration here at City Hall as well. So. So these babies have not, many of them have not really been out in public. Many of them were born during a time of isolation and, and we're glad for them and their moms to be able to come out and celebrate and be pampered a little, so. Do you guys have any questions or?
Yeah, how can we help? What can we do to help you with this?
So we would love to have you at as many events as you would like to be in. Some of you have signed up to do booths or floats and, or, or entries in the parade. And I believe you guys are working on your enter, parade entry.
Yes.
That was a question I had. So that you have a, the city council and the mayor will be in the parade, do we need to come up? I guess I didn't know, do we need to come with our own vehicle?
That was my understanding, that you guys typically find your own, create your own entry, is that?
I can get a trailer, Hudson, Jerry Hudson. I'll talk to him. We'll work on it.
Okay.
It's gonna be amazing.
It will be, it will be. Electric scooters, you can be, do whatever, yeah. Golf carts, whatever you would like to do.
And I guess just since the whole council's here, if we can ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
Will there be a city booth there, like for, you want to have the city council staff during the fling?
Yes, so that Saturday that we'll have you, we'll have a spot for you at our information booth. There will be, I'll send out a schedule that you can take shifts. And we, there's a part of the information booth will also include, um, information about the RAP tax and things like that. So kind of an open house feel there as well. So people can come and ask you guys.
So that, that was my next one. You'll have a separate booth if it be about RAP tax, so you could have something in there for Mount and Ridge Park?
We're gonna talk more about that later, actually.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so connect it all there together though.
And how are we doing on dinner reservations for the Monday night activity?
Last I looked, we have about ten families registered, so I kind of, I usually expect people to sign up the last three days of the window, so.
Is the deadline, when is the deadline for that, to sign up?
Next Monday.
Okay.
The twenty-sixth.
Okay.
It's catered by R and R BBQ and there's adult meals and kids' meals for anybody thinking their child probably won't eat enough to make it worthwhile. We have kids' meals too, so.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
So on the dinner, uh, obviously you've advertised it on the website and in the magazine and different things. Have you used the texting and texted people about it as well?
We have Everbridge texts ready to go out tomorrow in our, with our social media schedule, yes. And we put, there's a banner over by the park. I think we maybe need to shift a little bit how it's facing so they can see, but, um, yeah, we're, we're excited.
Sometimes we have a flashing sign on the side of the road. I haven't seen that for a while.
Yes, it's, it's out some, it rotates over the next week and a half, so it's in different areas of the city. So.
Okay.
It's on, it's out there working.
Where, where's the banner at the park at?
It's by the pump house. Is it at a pump house right there? With the, the city building on the corner, I believe it's a pump house there.
Yeah, they just put up a new fence there. I hadn't seen, you're talking about.
On the fence.
Ten four hundred, sixty-four hundred. I haven't seen anything at that pump house. It is up on the fence though?
Mm-hmm. It's a light blue banner. Apparently we need to move it out.
I might shift it for you.
Yes. So any other questions? Come join the fun, there's a lot of great things going on and I can't wait to see what real fling brings to the community, so.
Now, Mayor, at one time with the fireworks, I, you know, just a brief conversation trying to maybe have Alpine join in with us, but that, that, I wasn't sure if that kind of went where that went, so, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. Thanks for your, all your good work. She's busily working with her assistant and they're accomplishing a lot, so.
Corinne, you do such a great job, thank you.
Magazine was awesome. Magazine was awesome. All right, next, Mr. Murdoch. He's gonna talk to us about water, pressurized irrigation usage.
Sorry, thank for opportunity to be here again tonight. We're just gonna give an update on our water situation this year. I was here last month and we, we discussed that and the situation that we're in. And we're, we're just gonna give an update today. So far, this is our drought monitor. We are in an exceptional drought. As, as y'all may know through the news and the social media and everything, it's, we're in a bad situation right now this year with, with how dry it's been and the lack of moisture. So that's, this right here is a, I showed this, a similar slide last month. This is just a current updated slide of this year and last year. It's first twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. As you can see, this year our, our peak flow was eighty CFS, that's, and it was a momentary spike. We didn't, we didn't hold there for very long. And then we've, we've gradually dropped off down to twenty. We're currently at like fifteen, sixteen CFS coming out of American Fork Canyon, so it's on a gradual steady decline. If you can see that ti- kind of tabled off area just past eighty CFS, that is the release out of, uh, Tyble Fork and Silver Lake. So we try to maintain the flows in the river for a period of time. That release usually isn't implemented until July first. This year we, it was, it was gone before July first. It was, we started releasing that in, in June, just to keep the river flows up. And it was depleted before, before July hit, so that's kind of a indicator of how things are going. This right here is just the first fifteen days of July. As far as the flow, as you can see, it was at forty CFS and then Silver Lake and, um, Tyble Fork ran out of water down a conservation and then it, it dropped off pretty hard. Now we're down to, like I say, about seventeen. Our median flow up there with the triangles is kind of our average flow over an eighty-nine year period of data that's been collected.
So we're running about twenty percent of normal right now?
Yeah, we're, we're very low.
Out of the canyon? We still have stored shares in Dry Creek, right?
Uh, in Deer Creek and Jordanell, yes. That's where most of our water's getting supplied by right now is, is through the pipelines. This right here is just a graph showing our current situation. The blue lines are twenty twenty usage and the green line below it, or yellow, I can't really see the color from right here, but that's up until the first part of July. That's the data that we've collected. And so you can see we're, we're following a similar trend as we were last year. We have a slight reduction. We've seen maybe it's less than five percent of a, of a conservation effort so far in our system. We're kind of following the same trends as last year, which, which is a little disappointing and we're hoping to see a little bit more in, in the months to come. Hopefully we'll get that message out and we'll see that savings. I was asked to give an update on, on the farm agreement down on sixty-eight hundred West. The agreement, as you can see here, it provided for a hundred and forty acre feet per year is what he turned into the system. It's not turned into the city, he's just utilizing it through our system to receive it pressurized. With the twenty twenty-one drought allocation, uh, we did a quick calculation of that and it's approximately a hundred acre feet this year is what, what he's bringing in versus the full allotment of a hundred and forty. So it is, we are showing that decrease according to the numbers that we've received from Provo River and our storage sources. The use to date is approximately twenty-five acre feet is what he's used. We were a little lagged on getting the meter installed due to supply. They're on back order and hard to, hard to get, as, as many of you may know.
But he's metered now.
It is, it is currently running and we have a, we had about a, a week's worth of data is how we pulled this information. So we averaged it out over the, May fifteenth is when water was available for him to use after he made his connections. So we averaged it out over that, that period of time. So that's where that twenty-five acre, acre feet came from. And if he continues the same usage, it's anticipated that he'll use another thirty-five acre feet throughout the summer. So his total usage would be sixty acre feet. And that, that usage through our storage water, through our storage system, it's, it represents about one point five percent of that total that we bring into our system.
So he's bringing in a hundred acre feet and using sixty, is that what you're saying?
Essentially, yes. So, so the city does have the opportunity to utilize that water, that other, other water that he has that he brought in. So as part of that agreement, that's where the city showed a, there was a benefit to the city by bringing that, that, those shares into our system, even though we're not owning those shares, but we can utilize them.
So we're talking about the PEC farm, correct?
Yes.
So on the PEC farm, they'll use sixteen. Now, my understanding is they brought in irrigatable shares, but they also brought in stored shares, correct?
Yes, they brought in some from American Fork Irrigation and also through Provo River. And we, it's, it's compiled and the, the good majority of it is stored shares through Deer Creek. I think it was ninety, ninety acre feet. If I remember off the top of my head, it was brought in stored shares, the remaining was, um, American Fork Irrigation Water.
So it's not a bad thing to have those extra forty acre feet?
No, it's not a bad thing. A year like this, it's, it's, we'll take any drop we can get. It is a high usage on our system, but it's, it's working out the way that we've set up the agreement. I did have a contact with him today, ensuring, reminding him of the hours of operation of that, that turnout, um, 'cause I've, I've seen some discrepancies there, but we had that conversation today and he's gonna try to correct those actions.
We, because this is coming off our Canterbury Pond, have we noticed any issues at all in our Canterbury Pond? Cause the, the PEC farm is watering during the day, so drying it down, which is usually when we're trying to fill up for the evening water for the residents. Have you noticed any concerns there at the Canterbury Pond?
Um, no, but just to give you a brief update or not update, uh, knowledge of that pond, it's not necessarily a storage pond, it's just a flow-through pond. So it's a way to receive that water. So we maintain the level of that pond according to what we can pump out of it, our pumping capacity. So we'll bring in four CFS and turn on a pump and it pumps out four CFS. So it's, it's not necessarily a holding or settling pond, it's just a, a way to capture that water out of their pipe and then we pump it straight into our system.
Just, cause it'd probably be good information. So where do we, where are we getting our stored water connections? We have a connection by our Murdoch Pond, which is coming, you know, off the Murdoch Canal, so that would be stored water.
Yep.
Do we have one that comes across up by Cedar Hills that goes to our other pond? Is that correct? That there's?
We don't have a direct connection going to that pond. We have two connections off the Central Utah Pipeline. One's on sixty-four hundred West and ten four hundred North in a vault.
Okay, that's the one we were just talking about, okay.
That's one connection off Central Utah and we also have another one up by the gravel pit on the old Victor's property. There's a big mound of gravel there, there's a, right where Alpine's hooking on right now. They've just done a big project. We have a connection point right there also.
Has Alpine finished their connection there yet?
To my knowledge, not yet.
And that, we, you've probably heard that they asked their residents, I think it was last week, that they're, you know, they, they really, they needed certain days to fill because they were having a hard time getting adequate water up there in Alpine.
Right. Yeah, so to my knowledge, they're not utilizing that yet, which is, which is helping us. We can get a little more usage out of that pipeline without them being on it, so.
Are you gonna go into some stor- I don't, I don't wanna get too far ahead of you. You gonna go into some of our storage water, where we're at with that?
No, I, the last one was just our conservation, um, effort. Go, can you make it go to the next slide? There we go. No, I haven't, um, I didn't bring that, all that information. I can get that, get you that information as far as where we're at with our storage water.
I mean, do you know where we began? I mean, had we, I know that we tried to be really good stewards last year not to pull down a lot of our, you know, Deer Creek or Jordanell water, cause we were anticipating there could be a, a drought. So we tried to, I mean, I just remember talking at the time, trying to keep as much water as we could as our storage. Do you know what we began the year with? Did we have a hundred percent of our water to begin up there or we?
Um, we had, we had about, I think it was eight hundred and ninety-eight acre feet of holdover water. It was the high eight hundreds of water that we didn't use last year that we were able to store and bank for this year. This year with the reductions, I have it all written down.
No, you're fine.
I should have brought it. I can get you that information. But it's, we're on track. We hopefully will have some still in the bank for next year, but that number's gonna be less than what we had this year, which is, is discouraging. Hopefully we have some left for next year. If we can see that, the conservation efforts go into effect and people start saving, we'll increase that bank account that we have up there and see that savings and have it for next year. I could go into a long story about the, the water, but I was sharing with, with another resident here earlier about an, uh, article that was in Deseret News that Central Utah Water Conservancy Districts kind of highlighted in. And they've given a great explanation of the usage of the reservoirs, the stored water up there and our situation, which they emphasize that they're dipping into the emergency resources, which those reservoirs were designed for, but they're getting into those reserves now this year. So all of the runoff is gone that we had stored and they're getting into our emergency stored water in that article. So I encourage you to look that up and read it.
How are we, and I, and I, and I wanna hear what you have here on our, how are we doing on our wells? So since we're talking about water storage and our pressurized irrigation, are you noticing any drop in any of our well water? And if we start to, are we, are we okay culinary wise? Are we starting to augment our pressurized irrigation system with well water? How are we doing well water wise with leveling of that?
We do have two wa- two wells that we're utilizing for our pressurized irrigation system up on eleven eight hundred North. And we use that a lot for pressure, so we can boost the pressure to supply water up to Hogs Hollow, which serves the northwest area. We also have a submersible, um, pump here at the mouth of the canyon, right in front of our shop, that we're also utilizing to maintain our, our levels of flows.
But you've not seen our, our, do you know what level we're at with our wells? Have we seen the well water starting to come down at all?
I, do you have any information on that, Andy?
So, uh, in, in about the last. In about the last month, uh, our primary well there by the mouth of canyon, which is well two, um, has gone down about thirteen feet, uh, you know, our water level there. So we're not in jeopardy right now, but we have seen that diminish. In past years, we haven't had the ability to read the water level like we do now with the reconstruction of the, of the wellhouse. And so we don't have past year's data to compare it against, uh, you know, to know is that the normal draw that we would see or not? But, uh, that, that's what we've seen is about a thirteen foot, uh, drop over the, over the month of, uh, kind of last month and a half.
Is that, I mean, are we gonna be okay to keep dropping if we went another twenty-five feet, are we still gonna be pumping?
Right now we have sixty, fifty-nine feet of water above the, where the, where the, the intake is. And so, uh, right now we're fine, uh, you know, but, uh, it's something that we, that with some of the investment that we're putting into our wells that we'll be able to monitor in the future, um, and, and be able to, uh, you know, monitor our progress and monitor our impacts on the aquifer, um, you know, and, and so right now we feel okay, um, but it's certainly something we're watching.
Thank you. You're, you're gonna talk about some strategies here. But I've just been thinking how many times I have people say, I mean, the citizens unfortunately do not check the city website like they need to. A lot of people look at the newsletter to some degree. And I ask a lot of people, I mean, we had what, forty or fifty people here to the candidate debate night, I asked people, "Did you hear about it?" "No." So people are focused on other things in their life. It seems like maybe the best way to let people know is to have two or three electronic signs that are flashing as you come into the big highway saying, "We're out of pressurized irrigation, you've gotta conserve now." Because a lot of people, I mean, I still have neighbors that have hoses hooked to their culinary water, watering that dry spot. And I just think, why are we doing this, you know? We're in a big drought, it's in the news media, people can see there's no snow in the mountains, there's no water in the river. But, you know, I, I'm not sure how people can kinda, cause I think people sometimes are oblivious to what's going on around them. And maybe it's a good thing in some ways, uh, cause between the drought and the resurgence of COVID and everything else, it can get pretty discouraging. But that's what I would recommend that, cause I look at those electronic signs when I go by. It's hard to miss them and I think we need to really advertise this. So that's kind of my suggestion. Cause the cards and everything are nice, I got my card, but, you know, most of our mail anymore is junk mail. And so when I mail a lot of mailer for candidate, I don't know if anybody sees it, you know, but, uh, so I don't know, it's just my suggestion because I, I don't know how to convince people that we've got a serious problem here. And, uh, they still watering every little brown spot and I just think, I don't know why, yeah.
I agree and definitely don't wanna use your culinary water on the, those brown spots. That's a valuable resource. But just to finish up, we'll, we'll take that into consideration definitely and add that to the list of our.
Yeah, cause I look at the signs, they're big and flashing and how can you miss them? I don't know.
So our, in our efforts to conserve that we have, so we have water for next year, we're, we're shooting for that thirty, thirty percent. Hopefully twenty-five percent, anything's gonna help. We'll go get, take anything we can get.
But we're at five percent, correct, correct, today? We're only at five percent savings?
With, with the numbers that we've came up with, we're probably less than five percent With, with the numbers that we've came up with, we're probably less than five percent of a concert, conserve, whatever that word would be, an effort.
So even if we were at five percent and you took out packs, we'd still be only at six and a half percent?
Yeah. And that's, and where it says five percent, we're less than five percent, maybe three, four percent.
Okay. So if we're lucky, we're five percent if you factor in packs additional use.
So with our continued strategies for our public awareness, like we, like we've discussed, we've had the newsletter. That's an ongoing thing. Um, mailing postcards, these postcards that we mailed out, we're going to continue to send those out for people that may, may see them. There's text, email, social media. They're sent out periodically to the public. We just sent a new one out this last week, kind of emphasizing this, this message that we have. So we're going to continually, an ongoing process with that. Um, we've talked about and considered utilizing local LDS emergency preparedness channels via state presidents and, and whatnot to get that message out. It's a great source that we have here in this community with the high population of, of LDS residents. So we've considered that one. Door hangers, it would be a, a door-to-door thing. It's a little cumbersome to do it, to go out and go door-to-door to, to handle those out. But we've had volunteers in the past in certain areas where we've experienced pressure issues and we've seen that's a direct impact for conservation efforts. So we're looking into that right now. We have an option of an auto call. We, we'd hope, hopefully not to get to that where we, that's more of an emergency, a diary emergency situation when we need to use that, that resource, but that was there for us to use. Um, and future ones, possibly next year, restrictions, modify our days and times. Try to go over that and see if we can make that a better process. Enforcement of restrictions would be a, a next year thing and that kind of has to follow meters. Um, eventually we're going to have metered system entirely and we're going to have to follow up with that. And that's, that's one way that we'll be able to enforce those restrictions is, is through the actual data that we receive. Right now, we don't have clear-cut data of what each individual resident's using, so we need to get those meters in. And then at that point, we could, we could shut off if they, they're excessively using water.
And that's my preferred alternative because people in Highland have lots of money. And if we told them, you can use as much as you can pay for, we, we don't have an unlimited supply, so.
Right.
I think you use it, you shut it up.
And each, and each lots only, they only turn in so much water for that property. If they exceed that, they're taking somebody else's water essentially.
Thank you for all your, you know, your strategies in conservation and things that way. Do you have any idea what percentage of Highland currently has meters?
Well, I was trying to think of, it's, it's very small, a couple hundred meters versus the forty-five-hundred residents we have. So very small percentage.
And then just kind of two curious situations. When it rains heavy, do we, I mean, if it's up in the mountains and it starts to rain, does our flow start picking up in the river, which kind of helps? I mean, if we could get some good rainstorms, is that, do we see that starting to come down or?
Oh yeah. We see a spike in the river. If it's a significant storm, the one like yesterday, that little, little effect on the, the river. But a few weeks ago, when we had that, that day of rain, it rained quite a bit. It, it does bump up the river and we see those. We can see that on our SCADA system. We can see those spikes in, in river flows from that water. And we see usage extremely drop. So residents are paying attention to the rain and they're turning things off through that. But we haven't seen much rain.
And then if we, a while back, we were having some issues in our up and upper pond by Beacon Hills, up Angel Gate Road. Is everything taken care of there? Functioning okay?
We're still waiting for one of the pumps. Um, we ordered it back in January and it just keeps getting pushed along with all the other products that we're trying to order. Um, COVID's kind of messed up the industry as far as supply and demand of products. So we're still waiting on that pump. As soon as it gets here, our supplier's going to have it up here and it's, it's ready to go. The electrical's installed. They just need to get it there and set it in place. But right now we're maintaining a level. Things are looking a little better up that way. It, it's maybe through conservation efforts, but we are able to maintain that, that pond level up there.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Um, we're still running the splash pad, right?
Yes.
Is that, I mean, I know that that water recirculates, but that just kind of seems like a, I don't know, something we should think about during a drought?
Yes.
No, I mean, I, maybe that's a question. Do we, do you know how, what type of water usage we're losing by doing the splash pad? I mean, is it being recirculated? Does it go and come into culinary or just our storm drain? Where's that going?
It's, it's mostly recycled, but the person who knows more about the splash pad than any other person on planet earth is sitting back in the corner. So Josh is going to be speaking to you in a minute and maybe we can let him speak to the splash pad while he's up here. Uh, but it, it's a recycled system and it, it's a culinary feed.
Yeah, I would be interested to know that. The other question that I had, um, because you talk on there about future metering, do we know when we'll be able to reapply for a grant for our meters?
I assume this next year, right? I don't think there's a waiting period.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be pursuing those grants in the future, but, uh, as of yet, I don't know the exact.
And have we followed up to know why our proposal was rejected last time? As I understand it, there's a process where they like go through it after the denial to tell you why and what you need to do differently next time?
I haven't had a chance yet. I'm, I'm not sure if, uh, if we did, you know, during Todd's tenure. Um, so that's something that I'll follow up on, but I don't know yet.
And I got the, um, I have the information, the contact for the, um, person who actually reviewed our application, if you want me to get that to you. Perfect.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay. Next up, our expert on all things splash pad and weeds and grass.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, just to follow up with Jeff, so we can kind of on the same page. We are, we've reduced our water on the parks. So we've done as we've asked. Um, we do water three days a week. You might receive lots of questions saying that, um, we are watering every day. Yes, we are watering every day. Um, but take for instance, the cemetery, there's ninety-seven valves there. So we cannot make it in one night through the cemetery. So it is one section waters one night, another section, another night, and we just keep rotating it. But that section only does get water three days a week. Mitchell Hollow Park is another one, fifty-five valves. Okay? Just to kind of give you an idea. So yeah, we do follow the policy, um, the three days a week. But it can be confusing to someone if they drive by and see the water running. It is three days. It might just be a different area. It's just programmed that way. So we have reduced our water. We're, we're there. We're trying to save water, um, as much as we can. We feel very fortunate. We're still three days a week. Um, as far as I know with any other city, they're all two. So we are grateful that we're still at three at this point. Splash pad, we'll kind of cover that quick. Um, I haven't checked the, the meter. We do recycle water. Um, so we do use a fair amount of water. Um, we haven't, it, it gets really complicated to kind of explain, but we haven't dumped a ton of water and then, so the water goes down the river. It all goes back into a tank. It goes through the filter and the UV light and all that stuff gets turned over theoretically every forty-five minutes. It just makes this rotation. Um, there is a sensor adds water when it gets low evaporation. I mean, it, if you're in there, you can hear the sensor turn the water on for ten seconds. It's a matter of if someone takes a squirt of water out and squirts that out, you don't notice that we're low on water. It adds. Um, so I know in the past we've used a lot of water, um, but I wouldn't say we're using as much as we have in the past. Um, usage isn't as quite as high as it has been. So trying to make the water quality where it needs to be, we evolved lots of changing water and we haven't had to do that as much. So hopefully that answers your questions there. We'll go to that point. How's that? Any more questions or?
On the splash pad, just you said UV light. So you're not using like culinary or chlorine tabs or anything?
Um, we use a liquid chlorine. So you, we have to have a UV light and we have to have chlorine. So UV only works as it passes through that light. Chlorine's a residual that lives in the tank, um, that kills. So as stuff passes through, um, this is where it is, you don't ever swim in a pool after you've learned this kind of stuff. Is that chlorine, um, is finding resistance to cryptosporidium, Giardia, stuff like that. And so UV light, um, it can't live as it passes through there. So that's why we have a UV light.
Do you have much trouble with the kids adding to the water level?
Um, that's why, that's why I has a ten-minute break at every hour is to encourage that.
Okay. Wonder.
That's why it turns off so that.
Oh my gosh.
The kids can take a break and go to the bathroom.
I thought it was maintenance the whole time. Oh my gosh, but it works. It works.
It works. It's so stops. So hopefully that helps. Okay. We good to that point? Any questions there? Okay. I just want to be sure and not take up a ton of time tonight, but we just want to thank you. We've added, um, a teammate to our team. Um, if you're not aware, his name is Blade. Um, we hired Blade from out of state. Blade's recently, um, graduated in urban forestry. He's been a great addition to us. Um, we're grateful for his help. Uh, we'll go first to the open space maintenance as far as native and weeds. Um, we try to do the calendar just so that you can kind of see, um, an idea. Hopefully that visually helps you. Um, we are at two days at all of this stuff as far as out there. Doug is our guy that runs the tractor. He is pretty good about just moving from one place to the next. He's kind of got it mastered. Um, he kind of bounces into the Mitchell, oh, not Mitchell Hollow, but the Highland Hollow area and mows that. When he gets caught up on things and kind of backs and forth. If you're not familiar with that, that's a huge chunk of ground down there that he tries to get mowed. Um, so we can keep the complaints down with that. Um, so, but other areas he hits and makes his rotation and he's kind of got her down. So at this point, we're at two. We're hoping to make it to three on many of them. We do have some concerns with drought, um, dryness, catching fires. Um, we have some plans to maybe wet some areas down and then wet them down after they're done. Um, there is some concern we might help it grow with that, but we don't, it is an issue for many with the weeds behind their house. So that's kind of our plan on the open space there. So we're out and about making progress there. Any questions on the open space maintenance?
I just want to tell you, I appreciate all the work you're doing. And I'm just curious how you found an employee that does maintenance in the parks named Blade. I just find that really interesting.
I, I honestly, I felt very fortunate. We just got him and he was interested in the fact that he wanted to move from Wisconsin to Utah and had never, never lived here. He had been here, but, um, it's been, it's all kind of worked out. Everything's kind of fell into place and we're grateful to have him, so.
Well, we appreciate your work. So Josh, as we're looking at this map up here, this is mowing only or is this mowing and weeding, like spraying for weeds along the trails?
Um, this is just straight mowing native. Okay. So we just dropped off like normal manicured grass. We just went straight to the, the maintenance of the native areas. Okay? So we're pretty good there? No questions? Next one maybe? Okay. So we got weed control on the next one. This is kind of where Blade falls in, just so that you guys are aware what Blade is doing for us. Blade is taking care of spraying, um, which would be weeds, fertilizer and trees. Um, like this time of year, he only gets to work for a few hours on spraying until we reach a temperature where we're not going to spray anymore. So, um, it depends on the day. Like today, you got to go a little bit farther because it cooled off last night. So I think he made it almost to noon. So he's on a limited time as far as spraying. We have, today we should have hit twice on the native areas along the trails for the punch vines. I, we've made a difference. We've, we're one more time than we did last year. We only did once last year, um, with twice this year. I know that we've talked about the punch vines in the past. I'm not sure that we'll ever resolve this even when by the time I retire. It's just going to be an ongoing. They are, they're designed to grow in the worst conditions and this year is the worst conditions. So we have seeds out there that probably won't germinate for another five, seven years. So it's just going to be a ongoing event. Hopefully we can make a dent in it, but I don't know that we'll ever get rid of that problem.
So that's a punch vines. Are you guys getting rid of the little, is it the little redhead weed that, you know, they keep saying that we got to get rid of it everywhere in Utah? So it will just take control of things? What, I don't know.
I don't know what redhead weed we're talking about.
It gets pretty good in the blooms and they, we.
Purple?
Yeah.
A purple would be a thistle.
Okay.
So, um, we are using a selective, um, herbicide. So it means we're selecting, we're targeting broadleaf weeds. If we used a non-selective, which would fall under rammed up glyphosate, we would be just eliminating the competition for the, the weeds, for the, um, punch vine. So we're trying to just target the punch vine and those broadleaf type of weeds. Thistle does fall under that. Um, I think we do a pretty good job. There's just some spots beyond our boundaries that I see thistle that I would love to spray, but it's not to our, we can't. It's not on our property.
Josh, as we look at this maintenance, I want to tell you, thank you for what you're doing here. This is really awesome. If we look back two years past, you know, in the past, had we been spraying for weeds along the trails or is it just starting last year? And then this year, I mean, is it just, have we been doing it in the?
Last year was the first year that we ever sprayed along the trail. This year we've done twice as we've said. So, um, that's kind of where we are there. We've, honestly, we have not finished fertilizing the city completely. So we're only working on round one right now. Um, some of it has just been timing Blade kind of with his hire and move here. We kind of got a late start with him and it was whatever I could do before he got here. So we're, we're doing a little better on schedule. Uh, I guess my follow-up would be that is that we're getting lean on seasonals. Um, as of this morning, we were at fourteen. By the end of the week, we'll probably be at ten. At this point, two of the seasonals are helping with sprinklers. One of them's mowing weeds. Other one's at the splash pad. The rest are on the mowing crews. So that's kind of where we are. Um, at some point, we'll probably won't have enough and we'll have to move Blade over to, to mowing, so we can help get, keep caught up on mowing.
So as Blade is going out, and I really do like the name Blade, um, and he's, you know, working on weeds and trees and he sees dead trees. Is there like a log of how many dead trees we have and, you know?
I was going to ask him today and I forgot. I know, um, a while ago, we were at seventy-five for the year that weed pulled out.
So you guys are actively, when you're finding those dead trees, pulling them out?
And it, and it, well, if he sees it, then we just try to get to a schedule where we can go back and, and get quite a few of them at once. Whether his truck and trailer has the sprayers on there and if he has those on there, it's kind of hard to put a dead tree on there. So then he just logs that down and goes back. I'd imagine we're probably close to a hundred at this point. So, um, with the drought, we're probably going to have a few more. It's going to be a tough year on trees.
I have a question for you, Josh. When people come to me saying, hey, you know, there's huge bushes in front of Mitchell Hollow sign. So you can't even see the sign saying Mitchell Hollow or there's this dead tree or something like that. I don't want to bug you or bother you, but what is the best way to like bring that stuff to your attention, just so you know about it? Cause I don't want to bother Nathan also. He gets annoyed with me.
You can let me know. I know, I know exactly what you're talking about and, I mean, we can go into a whole pruning lesson. But when you reach a point on a woody plant and you remove part of it, you remove the terminal bud. And when you remove the terminal bud at that point in time, it says dog eat dog now. It, there's no leader anymore. So it, at that point is going to grow significantly more. So in situations like that, if we do that, we're causing ourselves more work by chopping those down. The best, best process is probably to remove them and, and start over. Does that make sense?
But to the greater question, is it best to have Joanne put it on your list, Josh, or how do you, when, when we have requests?
I mean, we've got a whole list of those that I can reach, reach off my head that I can tell you that we have bushes that are way bigger than they need to be. But cutting them back is only going to cause more work next year because at that point, there's going to be five more branches on the end of that that has grown two feet versus this year, it may have only grown six inches. I don't know if that makes sense.
So I'm just going to text you, Aaron, during the middle of the night, just letting you know when I find stuff.
Sounds good.
Josh, I'd like to.
I'm taking one for you, Josh.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, I want to go back to the comment you made before about the herbicides. So I'm going to use kind of a medicine metaphor. We know that if we use broad spectrum antibiotics too long and it alters the natural flora in the bowel, sometimes we get a really bad bacteria called, uh, Clostridium difficile and I see it a lot. We've all got it in our bowels. And it's, it's a terrible thing to get. So if you use really broad. So if you use really broad spectrum herbicides and kill a lot of stuff, what happens? Because you have, because you're talking about broadleaf weeds that you're taking out, but if you killed a lot more, what would happen?
Okay, so in our terms, broadleaf would be anything that's fairly wide, like a piece of Morning Glory has a wide leaf. A dandelion has a wide leaf. Broadleaf kind of falls under that, not meaning it's broad as in it kills, as in the, the structure of the plant. So when we target broadleaf, it's more of a selective so that we know that we can spray that area and only certain things are going to die. And it's the same process in the grass that we are mixing that up, that we can spray and kill the dandelions, but not kill the grass. And so then we will switch our chemical usage so we can only use it so many times to keep, so there's not resistance in there. So we have a whole slew of chemicals that we'll go back and forth with. And then if you go to a non-selective, which falls under Glycerphate Roundup is probably the most popular and that's a kill all. That's going to kill whatever it touches, it will kill. And then that's where you get more problems with, you're, you're creating a better growing space for those puncher vines. Those puncher vines love to grow when they have no competition and that's what you do.
They're the Clostridium difficile, basically. Okay, I was curious about that because it sounds like when you treat the broadleaf, you're kind of selecting for more grasses that are not, they're narrow leaf and they're leisure to maintain. I assumed you cut them off a couple of times a year and things. Is that, that's basically what we're trying to do with our native vegetation?
Yeah, that we're just trying to get rid of the nuisance stuff and that the other grasses can grow there and we can cut those down. And hopefully they'll eventually, I mean, thicken in, but with dry years like this, it's, I mean, it's
What do you do? Yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions I can answer for you? Thank you again for your time. You got any questions? I'd love to answer them for you at any time. Reach out to me and help you out.
Josh, I just want to tell you, thank you. I mean, is, I see a progress starting to happen, you know? I recognize our seasonals. We, we, I think last year we kind of, we had hope because we started getting a lot of seasonals and we've gotten a very competitive market again. You know, hopefully are you, what could you share with the council? I mean, it appears, you know, are you, you know, are we leaving budget in there because we can't hire enough seasonals in our parks department? Were we able to hire enough? What, what do we need to know that to help you support your department?
We were at 25. I don't want, not that I like to admit, but we hired whoever turned an application in. If they turn an application in, we called them and offered them a job. It really kind of a scary market that way. As I talk with many of my neighbors who are self-employed, have employees, they were under the same thing. I mean, we went from a couple of years ago where we'd get 300 applications to, we might've got 30 this year, you know? And we hired the ones as soon as we could get them. It's a different work ethic to explain it to you. We've had a lot that we tried to do in a center to keep them as long as we can. But many are realizing the summer's about over and they don't want to work the rest of the summer. There's not much we can do. They're just done for the summer. I mean, and granted, it's not an easy job. It's hard. It's hot. It's, it's tough. It makes them realize that it's important to go to school, but it is just hard to, to find employees right now, a competitive wage. I mean, we're starting them at $12 an hour. There are lots of other places they can make more money, but I think our advantage is, is that they can work 40 hours a week. We love to get as many of the college age kids we can because they tend to have the desire to work as much as they can because they know that when school starts, they don't really want to work. And they want to be able to make it through the year. And then when school's out, they want to work as much as they can so they have enough for the next semester. We've got a few of those guys in rotation, but not as many as we have had in the past. But that's kind of where we are looking for those type of guys. But we'd love to, our guys are gals. It tends to be more guys. We've had more girls this year than we have had in a long time. But we're, it's just harder. We'll probably have some in the budget. I just don't know how much, like, I can't tell you will be significant. We've had to pay. I mean, we give them a raise if they come back. We encourage them 50 cents more an hour for every year they come back to try to, their knowledge is valuable. It's, Blade's experiencing the, where it ends and where it stops and trying to figure that out. When you have as many acres as we have, it takes a long time for people to figure out this is their property line and this isn't our property anymore. And I mean, granted, our residents are pretty patient because I know that we've mowed grass that's not ours. I know guys have weed waxed grass that's not ours. And most of them are pretty patient with us as they experience that, but we're, we're trying with new guys every year and we only have a limited amount there, so.
You've brought Pandora's Box, so let's talk about it. On the, on our encroachments and on, on some of the things, are you having a hard time knowing where to mow? Are we seeing a lot of encroachments out there? Is it affecting your work or is there things, as we, we've been looking at some orphaned open space properties to sell. How would that affect you in, in the parks department?
I think selling the ones with grass is kind of hard. It makes it really difficult for us because it changes sprinklers. It changes all that. And as much as people think they understand, but when you get to a commercials type landscape sprinklers, the price changes. It drives the cost up. It's, it's different than a residential. I mean, if you take one of our heads, and, and they're not, all of them are along there, but you have a $75 head versus the $15 head you bought at Home Depot. You know, it's, there's a difference in that cost. I think the ones with grass, I don't know that, in my opinion, that they're worth getting rid of. It just causes more complications and that. We have tons of encroachment on native areas. And that's, I would dare say if those were changed, I bet your water usage would change. As I think of some of them, there are plenty that are above a half acre that have encroached. So you think about all those areas that are watering beyond what they were supposed to water. It just changes that whole dynamic there. And I know this is Pandora's Box. It opens it up, but it's something that needs to be probably addressed at some point. That we could rein some of these back that are in conservation easements that have barbecue grills and trampolines and everything else.
So let me just kind of add on that if it's okay, Kurt. So we were, we're talking about metering and there's pros and cons on metering. Because some people feel like if they have a meter, they can use as much water as they want. But it seems like if we did have things metered and that some of that happened, it'd bring a lot more water, a lot more money into the system so that we could find ways to upgrade and have the funds to do that. I mean, to me, you can make the argument on both sides. If I had a meter on my place, I probably would use less water if I knew how much, you know? Because I'm, we have our own pressurized irrigation and I water three times a week for short periods. But at the same time, I'm just, what's your feeling about metering? Because there's, you can make the argument that'll bring a lot more money in, but at the same time, some people may use an excuse to water more. And so I'm
There's an affordability in our town that when they've spent as much as they have on their landscape, and I know there's places that are well above 100,000 on their landscape. And $6,000 water bills, quite an investment to pay for their
Sure.
For their yard to keep it green. And that's, that's kind of the hard part. I mean, you're going to have some areas that it probably will affect and they'll be probably a little more easy on not using as much. You're going to have some areas that's probably not going to matter with a meter. But that's just my
There might be sixes, kind of, you go either way.
If you got any questions, go ahead and reach out to me. I'd love to answer, meet with you, whatever you want me to do. I can meet you wherever. We can talk anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, consent items. We have four items on consent. Approval of meeting minutes, agreement with Roger and Marla Lyman, temporary construction easement. Municipal code amendment for fire code and burn permits to get them in line with state. And then the resolution on the declaration of surplus property.
Mayor, I'd like to pull number four B.
And I'd like to, I've got some questions on four C, so I'd like to pull that.
Can I have a motion on four A and D though?
I move that we approve the consent items number four A and four D.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Kurt, second by Scott. Wait, can we vote? Are we voting online?
Okay.
Passes unanimously. Okay, four B, Kurt.
I need to disclose a conflict of interest. This is my neighbor directly across from the street and this item will deal directly with the neighborhood I live in. So I'm going to not, not be part of the vote.
So you didn't have any other question other than you want to abstain from this one?
So I have a question. Oh, Kim, go ahead.
I just have a question on this one. So this is a temporary construction easement and we're paying them $13,000 in order to temporarily have access to the back area of their property to fix their sewer station, which services them and will help them. Is this the lift station one?
Correct.
Yes. Do you want to, do I not mean to answer? Yeah, this is the, the Victor View Lift Station. And basically we need to use their back field in order to bring in the cranes, et cetera. And so we will monopolize the use of their field where they have, they pasture their horses right now. And so it's typical for us if we're going to, you know, occupy somebody's property like that to compensate them. To determine the compensation, we looked at what the appraisers had come up with for the properties that we've acquired on 6800 West and offered similar compensation. But yes, this, this is compensation to use their field and they, they have to find somewhere else to, you know, care for their horses for the time period that we're, we're involved back there. So, but you've got the basic gist of it. We're paying the money to occupy their field. And it is to fix their neighborhood, you know, but it, it's typically fair. You know, if you're going to target one person's home, you know, to compensate them. If the neighborhood at all liked to pitch in, I'm sure we'd take it, but you know, that, that being said, that was just a joke, you know? But yeah, other than that, it is fair that we compensate them.
Could you tell us just quickly how you decide that number?
So the properties on 6800 West, typically a construction easement is about 10% of the value of the land. And so we, we took the average of what we were paying on 6800 West, which we were paying about 62 cents a square foot. And came up with around a number, if you will. We're using 23,000 square feet of their property. If you times that out, it's actually 14,000 some odd. And so we're a little less than that, but that's how we got there. You know, is using that, that value of about 10% of the value of land. So if the land's worth about $6 a square foot, we're giving them 60 cents.
That's the same question I had. Can I go ahead and ask about C or do we need to have a separate motion?
We could do B and C together if
So I have a, just a quick question on what we tell our residents about the, getting the burn permit. Because I went to the website that was highlighted. I get there. It looks reasonably simple to use, except it's all blanked out. So does that mean no one can apply for a fire permit unless it's in the period in the spring and the fall? Or does that mean they're not issuing any fire permits? Because if you try to get a fire permit right now for the fall, there's no way you can get into the website or I couldn't last night. And, and I'm not the most tech savvy, but it's there, but the button where you would push to submit an application or request is kind of not highlighted.
Yes, that's absolutely correct. You did it right, but you see, it does have a little kind of prompt underneath that it's only between March 30th, May 30th, September 15th, October 30th.
They're going to do it when that time is.
Yeah, they won't review burn permits outside of that window.
So you can't apply outside that window either?
No, and they're not too long to process, so it's not a major risk. I think
Yeah, it didn't look hard, but yeah.
They'll get forward, I think, sometimes to the fire department for review, sometimes depending on the situation, but that's, that's
So you've got to wait till the first day that they're permitted before you can apply for one?
I believe so. Maybe they have a window. I haven't applied for a burn permit.
It'd be nice to know the window because we'll have people ask us when the window truly is. Okay. Very good. I'll go ahead and make a motion.
If you make a motion on B and C.
Okay. I move that the Highland City Council approve consent items four B and four C, which includes the agreement with Roger and Marla Lyman for the temporary construction easement. And also the ordinance municipal code amendment, fire code and burn permits, making our code equivalent to the state.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Kim. Kurt will be recusing himself on this. So should we do a roll call vote here? Are we ready to go?
Voted?
Yep, you should be okay.
Okay. Okay, we're ready to go. All right, that passes unanimously with one recusal. All right, next item is public hearing action Urban Deer Program Renewal.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. That will be something that I handle tonight. Erin, do you mind running the little thing for me? Thank you.
Before you get started, I'm assuming that's Jaden that's here and somebody from Brian Cook's organization.
Yes, tonight we have Jayla Walden with us from DWR. And Jared Bagley is one of the specialists that's been working with our program since the beginning, so.
So if we have questions after we're done?
After I'm finished, yes. So just to give a little bit of a background about our Urban Deer Program. This program began in 2013. We were kind of a pilot program with the DWR. And it's been very successful for Highland City since then. Brian Cook with Humphreys Archery has been the program director since the beginning. And for your information, in 2013 to 2019, this program was an archery only program. In 2019, City Council opted to allow trap and euthanize methods as well as an archery program. And that has worked really well in areas where the archers felt that it was too dangerous to take an animal. And it was in a more open area where it would be dangerous for them to do that. Since the beginning of the program, urban deer population has been reduced to an estimated from 300 to about 150 deer, the resident deer.
Wait, when you say reduced, does that mean less deer are coming down the hill or reduced as in euthanized?
No, we've removed all over 200 deer since the beginning of this program.
So there's a permanent deer population in the city?
Yes, the permanent deer population in the city.
Gone from 300 to 150?
About 150 each year.
Yeah, and half of them are in my backyard. I'm not kidding.
Nice.
Yeah, it looks like the numbers that I have, the total deer harvested up to 2000 and, sorry, 2020 was 215 so far. Erin, do you mind going to the next slide for me? So this year we had to apply for a new certificate of registration through the DWR. And DWR this year is, is requiring that we make some changes to our Urban Deer Program. One of the biggest changes is that the program will run from August 1st until December 7th, rather than extending clear till the end of the year, December 31st. And then another big change is that they, we have separated Highland City into kind of a tiered approach where at the beginning of the season, we will be harvesting closer to the mountains. And then as it goes later into the year, they will be harvesting deer closer into the, the central, central city area.
What, what does it mean harvesting?
Capture and killing. That's the nice way of saying killing the deer.
This is so sad.
One more change that we have this year is that typically in years past, we have paid $75 per deer that is harvested. And this year it will be $100 a year. That will be a change in our budget. Last year we paid, we took out 20, 25 deer last year. So this next year, I would, we would anticipate, this year we paid 6650 for the total program. And this next year, if we take out 25 deer, it would be a total of 7,500. So an increase of about $850 for this program.
You can't relocate the deer?
We do not relocate the deer. No.
They come back. They're like raccoons.
Like your backyard.
Yeah.
They don't survive relocation very well.
So Stephanie, can I ask a quick question?
You bet.
Do you know why they shortened it in December? Is that to, so we wouldn't get any of Santa's reindeer or something? I don't, usually they'll go to the end of of Santa's reindeer or something? Usually they'll go to the end of the year.
Well, in a nutshell, yes. We're trying to make sure that we do not harvest any deer that are not resident deer. So that is, that is exactly why. We want to make sure that the migratory deer are not affected by our program.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. And the reason I need to explain the cost a little bit more, the cost for this program, and this was in your staff report, but it's twenty-five hundred dollars for each location. We have had two locations in the city, and so that's going to be five thousand dollars per location, and then it will be one hundred dollars per deer that is removed. So we estimate if we take out twenty-five deer this year, the total cost for the locations, as well as the deer, would be about seventy-five hundred dollars. And the increase, Brian spoke to me today about the increase for that from seventy-five to one hundred, is simply covering the costs of bait and the cameras that they use to identify these deer. And then paying, they pay fifty dollars for each, for the specialist every time they take out a deer, so...
So a question. We have a lot of people in the state that pay to go hunt deer. Now, I understand we're talking about specialist here, but is there, you know, it appears that this is a sport that some, I mean, they're going to harvest meat, you know. So one of my questions is, what happens with the meat from the deer? Is, are they, do they take it somewhere so the meat can be used? And since this is kind of a, you know, some would pay to do this type of aspect, you know, we're paying to have them do it, but it appears this is something that some seek to do.
Really? And I think that I'm going to let Jared answer the question on that, because he will know, he'll be able to give you a better answer than me. But that, that meat is donated. So Jared, do you want to talk about that?
So part of that initially came...
Thank you.
When we initially did it, we donated through the, some meat processors, so it could be donated to the homeless shelters. So the cities weren't incurring that cost. So what happened was, to reduce that cost, we got to where we could donate the meat directly. So that's, we get a list from, usually from the city, and through our own contacts, of people who are looking for meat or who need a deer. So that's what happens to them. The first, the first year from Highland City, we donated, I think, fifty-five thousand, or fifty-five hundred pounds of meat. So it's, I think we did ninety the first year, like seventy the second. It was, they figured it was about thirty-three thousand meals for the homeless through those. Now we donate them directly. To your question is, that always is the first thing that comes up. And the answer quite simply is, you don't want anybody shooting deer in your city. Like, it's, right? So it's not just, we're, it's not even fair probably to call it hunting. We're really culling deer. And it's a lot of work, and it's a, it's a lot of time and money to us. So we've, we've essentially donated our time to this. Most of the money has all simply gone to bait, cameras, and bait stations. So it's only been the last couple of years Brian's tried to, tried to offset some of our costs. It cost us, the one, the guys doing it, it cost us thousands of dollars a year in gas and arrows and all that stuff, so...
How many different hunters would you have participate in this program?
Just four. There's been four of us, yeah. We started with more, and it's just easier to manage with fewer people. And to Highland City's credit, like you guys mentioned, we really started with Highland City. I'm a resident of Highland City. The mayor's been here since the beginning. He's seen this thing develop, so...
Actually, Lynn was here when we started the program. It's a year to come.
Yeah, so just so you know, we started this, so we do a lot of cities now. We do, I think, eight cities currently. They've all kind of followed Highland's model. And so you guys, you guys have all done a good job, both from working with the city council, the mayor, currently the past mayor, the, the police department. We still get calls now from all over the country of people trying to figure out how to do this. And so Highland City's really kind of been the model for that and continues to be. And we've replicated that now in other cities. So hopefully that answers the question. But, yeah, it's, it's very, we're extremely selective. For people to do it, they have to, one, they have to pass a test, a shooting test with bows that ninety-nine percent of people can't pass. And two, they have to have the demeanor to, we're not out hunting deer, we're culling deer. And it's one hundred percent safety first, and then you figure out how to remove the deer, so, yeah.
So how many deer do you think you've taken out of the Highland Glen Park over the years?
Initially, we took a lot out. Initially, there was a lot of deer in there. And so I would say the first couple of years, we probably took thirty-plus out of there the first few years. And then those numbers, we just kept going down, down, down. Now we've kind of gotten to where we have a couple main areas we do. As Highland Glen has kind of grown a little bit, there's more people, there's more traffic. We haven't moved in there as much unless we get a request, either from the police or the mayor, to, that there's having a specific problem. We don't go in there as much now, because mostly we removed a lot of them. And two, they weren't getting complaints from the few people that had them mostly in their yard.
So, and I live down the south end of Highland Glen, and I worked with Mayor Ritchie when we originally put this in.
Yep.
And it's kind of, because I like to garden, although this year is kind of a mess with the drought and everything. But I haven't been able to grow a rose bush forever, because the deer love them. And I thought when they put the east-west quarter in, and they have some walls up and that, that I would cut the deer herd. But they're coming down the American Fork, the dry American Fork River bed and coming, I mean, I saw a deer in our neighborhood yesterday, and I look at my backyard, and it's like they've had a dance out there. I don't have to aerate my lawn anymore. So I like to say, we're still having problems off the Highland Glen Park, and they're coming down the riverbed. And I want to say, I love wildlife and deer and things, but they really do a lot of destruction. I mean, my wife went out in the backyard, and there were two stags that were fighting, and she tried to shoo them off, and they chased her out of the yard.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it's sometimes a little bit of a danger, too. And I think you folks came and, and kind of helped that situation, because I complained, but, you know...
They are dangerous, because they're urban deer. They've been conditioned differently. So, and those deer in particular, they're not going up the canyon. They, they have a loop they do. They live there. And that's the problem, is once they live there, every year, they drop two more fawns, and they just, it just continues. And so, like, in that particular situation, we don't hear that very much anymore. And if they do, all it takes is a call to one of you guys or the mayor. And they, if we get a request that, that you guys tell us and say, this resident has a problem, we'll go out and evaluate their home. Sometimes we can't take them from their property, because it's not set up. It's either, we don't have a place to shoot them. Now we can do traps, which alleviates that some. But they make a loop. So a lot of times, like, if you were having a problem, if we went to your place, and we're like, ah, we can't safely remove them here, we watch them and see what they do. And then we find someone in the neighbor, somewhere in the loop they're doing. And then we go talk to that person and say, you have a safe place, could we remove these deer? And most of the time, they say yes. And then we remove those same deer that are in your place, but someone else's. But we do that primarily by request now. In the beginning, we just went everywhere, because there were so many. And so the police department stuff just gave us a list. We ran around and picked those. Now we've got a couple main sites that we run. And those deer, the way they move, we can, we can be in the city and get a bunch of them that are making those loops, and we just get them when they make the loop. So, but that, that is something that all that has to do is send a request to us and we can go...
So that was my question. So you're out kind of calling, if you want to say, but is it, you know, Chief Williams, is it something that you guys give a list where you're starting to, I assume some of the reasons to harvest is so we don't have the cars hitting them, you know, in the roads where they start getting, and maybe they're destroying some property. But is that a list you usually get from the police department? Well, if a resident's having concern, are they supposed to call the city? Are they supposed to call the police department wants the process?
Either way, they, they usually get through, to us through you guys, or they know enough of us now. Sometimes they'll contact us directly. But we have to have your permission to go set a site. So if it comes through us and we call, and sometimes you guys are like, eh, it's not a big enough problem. Then sometimes the mayor's like, yeah, go, go remove those at that place. So we do that based on what, where you guys tell us, so...
I mean, I had a deer in my front yard, and I live off of one oh four hundred north. And that was my biggest concern was, I mean, take two steps, and that deer is right in front of a car. So, I mean, I guess best case scenario would be to call public safety and then have them take care of it, or what, what do we need to do?
Well, in those cases, we're looking still for, if you just have a deer occasionally somewhere, that, we're looking for deer that are living in people's yards consistently, right? And so, and that's one, I haven't looked at the numbers just lately, but the motor vehicle accidents, as we tracked them from the beginning, is down drastically.
Yes.
It's, and so, and just from my own standpoint, when we first started doing it, I, we removed so many deer that didn't have legs, missing legs. I mean, they'd been hit, and they, there was a lot of them. And we rarely see those anymore, rarely. And so that's, they're tough. And so they'll live on, they'll live for months or a year without a leg, so...
Can I ask a quick question? I guess we're having a discussion, aren't we, Mayor? Okay. So Chief, when a deer is hit on one of the highways, especially if it's a state highway, what's the process to get that removed? I know there was one on the Alpine Highway a couple of years ago, and, and somebody finally put a sign up, "Fresh Meat." I think it was two bucks a pound or something. That kind of is a joke. But what's the process? Because I get asked this all the time.
Typically, what we'll, what we will do is, we will contact the Division of Wildlife Resources, and they have a team that will come out and pick those up when their schedule permits. I think we've seen some times when they're really busy during the busy season. It takes a few days for them to get out here, and I wouldn't want that job. I mean, I've drugged enough deer off the side of the road to have them come get them, and some of them are quite a mess, especially if they've been there for a few days. So in the hot summer, if you can get my drift. I just want to make a comment really quick to answer a couple of questions. So I was here back in two thousand and thirteen when Highland started this program with Mayor Ritchie, and he was very instrumental in bringing that here. I was very, very skeptical about how this was going to happen. My biggest concern was, is we were going to have, you know, the wild, wild west and deer running around with arrows hanging out of them, crawling up on people's porch and bleeding out, and we were going to get phone calls. And in two thousand and thirteen, from two thousand and thirteen to now, our, our agency has received one phone call about this group, and that's simply because there was a blind that was left in an, in an area for a hundred to come set back up. So these gentlemen are marksmen. They're sharp, and they know what they're doing. And Brian Cook was very, he was very smart in how he found his, his, his specialists, is what we call them. We get no calls, we get no complaints, we see no deer. I don't know that I've ever seen one of these guys get in and out and actually cull a deer and bring it out and, and take it. So they're very, they're very good, and we, we don't get any phone calls. The phone calls I do get are from my counterparts, police chiefs from other agencies from around the state, and actually from other states, asking how the program works, wanting documentation, wanting information on how to get this thing started. So I think you guys, you said you're doing eight cities now. I've gotten at least three dozen phone calls from, from chiefs around the state, asking about this program and how it works. So my hat's off to them and, and their team, and Brian, and how he's done this. I know in the very beginning, Brian and his team donated every, every penny, every hour. All of it was donated. They just wanted to get this program up and running and show that they could do it. I think they, they saw it as a challenge, and they far exceeded our expectations. I think Mayor Ritchie could, could attest to that as well, so...
Yeah, two parts. One, when I, when I come to meetings, since Brian does a lot of this, and I go to select ones, when nobody knows me, I'm like, exactly. Nobody knows me. They don't know who I am. And that's the point. No, they don't know who I am. Even the people in the cities, like, both those chiefs of police that I deal with have never met me, because I've never had to meet them and deal with it, which is, which is really good. And for those of you who are here before, just the fact that behind me, there's not three hundred screaming people about deer probably speaks for itself, because that's what it was when we started.
It was. I remember.
I think Mayor Ritchie wanted to make, can he do that?
Sure.
Yeah, he wanted to make a comment, since he's the one that put this in place.
Yeah. I tried to sell this program about three days a week to other cities. When I, Alpine particularly, they, they have a committee. But just a couple of comments, because I presented this to the Central District and to DNR up in Salt Lake, and I kind of ran the face of the city, saying, we want to do it. Brian and his people are consummate professionals. He said there are four people doing it. They started with nine. The reason they went to four is the pressure on the others was too great, because the requirement is every shot is a lethal shot. So you don't take the shot unless it's a lethal shot. And it was so much pressure on some of them, they, they didn't want to do it. So that is just, there was eighty-four accidents on SR ninety-two the first year before we did it. The second year, there was forty-two. The third year, there were six. And so the accidents have just gone down tremendously. Kim mentioned about relocating. They, they put them in trailers, and it's like popcorn in a trailer. And then there's only a fifty percent survival rate. They tried using rifles up in Bountiful. They brought in fifteen hunters, and then they had to bring in fifteen policemen. And they, and so they tied up thirty people and resources, and then they, they got six deer. So this archery program is so efficient and so, so well-run. They tried to eliminate, one of the residents thought we should eliminate it about five years ago. And, and so he made a presentation. Brian got up and quoted all these statistics. And it is just, it's, it's successful, very successful. I'm glad I was here tonight, because I was wondering if it was continuing. And I hope it does. Thanks.
And it's very safe. That's...
One other thing I might say real quick, and she can talk to it, too. But one of the other reasons, initially, when we transferred over and started to transport some, transporting them is, is a nightmare, and they don't survive very well. But it's not an option anymore, because there's some chronic wasting disease around the state of Utah. And so you can't risk taking an urban deer that might have chronic wasting disease and putting it out. So right now, it's not even an option, so...
That's good to know. Did you see, did you say DWR is here also?
Yes.
Oh, I have a question for you. I used to be the budget analyst over DNR. Is Dead Deer Dan still there picking up, or is it a totally different person? Because when I was there, that was the person that went and picked up all the dead deer.
I've heard the name, and he's not around.
Dead Deer Dan is gone?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just to follow up on the translocation, the cost to translocate, at least when Bountiful did it a couple of years ago, they, they did a big analysis on it, and it was over a thousand dollars per deer just to translocate them, because of all the effort, the testing, the transporting, the man-hours involved in doing it.
And then the survival rate isn't...
And then the survival rate's really low, yeah.
That's good to know. So when we do see deer on the side of the road, is it best to call Lone Peak or you guys? What is the best way to?
It's confusing for the public, because it depends on what road it's on. So UDOT has a lot of contract roads. UDOT has contracted individuals that have to go out and do, like, the major highways. And then the Division of Wildlife picks up on the side roads. So if you want to call the Springville Main Office directly, that's a great way to report roadkill. But if it's on a highway, then it, we just put, we just push it off as contract, and we don't take care of it.
Just call the police.
You got it. Okay, that's good to know.
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks for coming and, and doing this program and telling us more about this. This is a, I mean, I think this is a great thing for Highland, and I appreciate it.
Yep.
So I'd just like to make one other comment. So we're not eliminating the deer in the city. We're just keeping the herd manageable, right?
Exactly. So you'll never get rid of all of the deer in the city. It's just not feasible. You're basically just keeping them at a tolerance level that is either tolerable for all of your residents and manageable for the city. Otherwise, they can just, they'll explode exponentially fast, especially as you guys develop into more open spaces. That the open space is, is just disappearing at crazy rates. And so those deer have nowhere to go but being in the city, so...
While you're standing there, can I ask you two questions?
Of course.
Okay, so in the foothills, we're starting to see a lot of wild turkeys, especially Alpine has a problem with that. There was kind of the famous one that went through the plate glass window and, and all that. But Councilwoman Bills tells me they're having trouble with mountain goats coming in and, and ramming through windows and things. She had quite an interesting story. She told me about that. Are there any efforts to kind of control that, or is that just because we live in the foothills now, or?
Um, I don't think that's a very common occurrence, but if it does happen, definitely contact us. And I can give you guys my contact info directly, because that's stuff that I would deal with. And I can respond most, like, pretty much twenty-four seven if there's something like that going on, especially with a once-in-a-lifetime species.
Now, they had quite an interesting episode in their neighborhood.
Yeah, we had one that butted his way through somebody's glass door, like their back patio door. And it made quite a mess.
It's crazy what wildlife will do sometimes.
So a follow-up question. If, if, let's assume that a resident sees a cougar, but they only see it one time. Is, is it something you want them to call to say, hey, we noticed this on our cameras, but if it seems that they're passing through, just let it happen? Or, you know, when, when should a resident call if they see, like, a cougar or foxes or things of that nature?
So for cougars and bears, it never hurts to give us a call and at least report it, so that it's on our radar. That way, if it starts getting reported by multiple residents, we can start to track it. And, because we don't want children or pets or anybody to get injured. However, it becomes a concern if it's one in the middle of the day, if it's being aggressive towards people, if it's, like, caught on... if it's being aggressive towards people, if it's like caught on a trail cam in the middle of the night. That's pretty normal behavior for cougars. But like middle-of-the-day sightings, or particularly if an individual sees the cougar treed or under a porch at that time, if you contact us, then we can respond. But it does take us time to get out to places. And so if it's like, "Oh, I saw this on my door cam at 2:00 AM," then generally, we can't really get to it. That cougar could be five miles down the road. Like, we don't know where it's at at that point.
Is it the same for foxes, if we happen to see foxes in the area?
Foxes aren't considered protected species, and so they would actually, I would actually recommend people contact pest control for foxes. So foxes, raccoons, skunks, all don't fall underneath us.
Who do I call for skunks?
Pest control.
Nobody wants to deal with my skunks.
Chief Williams, do we call the police department? What she's saying, call DWR direct? Do we go through the police and then you kind of help the call? I mean, help us kind of know the process or the recommended process.
You can call us for skunks and raccoons and things of that nature, but we're not going to, we don't deal with them. We're just going to refer you to a pest control agency.
Nobody deals with the skunks. The spotted skunks are protected.
They are, but they're super uncommon, so it's probably not a problem that you have.
It is.
Someone painted their cat.
There's a short comment. I'm on the animal board, the North County Animal Shelter, and they will accept raccoons, and then they kind of take care of them. But, so that's an option. I've never heard of them accepting a skunk, though.
Anything else for our DWR representative?
No. Mayor, do we need to have a public hearing?
We will. Are you done with your presentation?
Let me see if I have anything else on you. I just wanted to show you the harvesting map. Erin, do you mind going to the next slide for me?
We do need to have a public hearing on this, too.
Okay, as you can see in this harvesting map, this is kind of the areas that will be designated for harvesting during those periods of time. And you can see, I'm hoping you can see that, the central area of the city is going to be the very last that you can harvest. They're the longest, so. Any further questions before we go to a public hearing?
Okay, I will open up a public hearing.
Thank you.
For a comment on this item. Is there anybody online, Erin, that wants to say anything? Seeing none, seeing none present, I will close the public hearing. Okay, council, do we have, do you have a recommended motion for council?
I have a motion.
On the very next slide, please.
Okay, yeah. I'll make that motion if you'd like. I think we've discussed this quite a bit. So I move that the City Council approve the continuation of the Urban Deer Control Plan Maintenance Program for August 2021 through July 2024.
Paul Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Brittany. Are you ready for a vote? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. I do talk to Brian occasionally, and I had a nice conversation with our...
Scott Warren.
How do you say your first name? Jayla. And it was a really good conversation. So thank you for taking the time to talk with me, and thank you for all the work that you guys both do to make Utah a great place to live.
Like, fire.
And Highland. All right, next item. A review of Resolution 202116, designation of orphan properties for disposal. Is that you?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is an item that I'm sure y'all are well familiar with. On June 15th, at the City Council meeting, the council did review all of the open space requests for purchase, and the council either decided to approve, defer, or deny the requests. Right now, we are just, basically, we have asked the council to review all of the properties that were said to be approved in that resolution just because there were some, or majority of them had conditions that were attached to those approvals. And so we were just wanting an extra clarification on that, yes, these properties were approved. And so that's just what we're asking, is that approved list as to what staff assumed was approved, is what was included in the staff report. But we are...
So if council members have any comments or changes or questions, that's the time.
Yes, that's something that we would have you include in the motion as to any changes that you think should be made based on our interpretations of what was discussed on June 15th.
So can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
I sent you an email on this, and I'm sorry, I had a really busy day. I didn't get back to your answer.
Okay.
But I was a little confused on, in the column, it says yes or no. I understand that. I wasn't quite sure what the O's meant.
That just meant deferred.
Oh, okay.
Yes, all of the O's were deferred. And so in the resolution, every single property was included just because that's what was on the Google sheet, was all of these are approved, all of these are deferred, and all of these are denied. But that's just why it appeared that way.
So I have a real concern. This is my June 15th paper I printed out, and it doesn't match what we have here.
There's properties on there we've never even looked at, like the Avery, the Canterbury North. Where are those coming from?
Those are from the previously approved, where you told the residents, "If you live here, you don't have to send a formal request to us" because y'all had already looked at those. And so that's why there's a difference in here, and we're adding those ones that were previously approved or previously looked at when staff and the council looked at it. We're just including them in the resolution as these are all formally approved. And that was our mistake with the previous resolution.
Okay, so those are all the ones that staff looked at and said, "We recommend these," and then we said, "Yes."
And then y'all looked at them after, and yes.
We talked a lot about it.
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
What?
Gentlemen, as rising as he has.
Okay, this, we don't have a public hearing, but if you have something short, sure, come up.
Peter Kilgore, I looked at the lists. Attachment one, it says those are the approved properties for disposal. And then attachment two is what looks like this is the list we're going to decide on, right?
So attachment two was the resolution that was passed on June 15th. The first one was what, basically, based on the discussion, what we're saying this should be what's in the resolution. But that's what we're bringing to the council, saying, "Is this correct?"
So my question is, should all the properties in attachment one be addressed in attachment two? Because they're not. There are some missing ones.
It's flipped. So everything that's in attachment two should be in attachment one. There are additional ones that are in attachment one that are not in two. Does that make sense? So there are some that were not included in the resolution that needed to be added that just, the council didn't receive requests from them because they had already reviewed them.
Okay.
That probably doesn't make sense.
But in the resolution, they're going to approve, attachment one says those are approved because it doesn't actually say in...
So the ones in attachment one haven't been approved yet. That's what they're hoping to approve, or they could make changes to. But attachment two is the resolution they passed on June 15th, and that's what they're looking to change or amend or fix based on what they discussed on that date.
Some of those in attachment one were discussed on the 15th also.
Oh, yes. All of them should have been discussed on the 15th.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Okay, council, do you have any that you would, any changes to the notes on properties or any changes to the list in terms of things that are there that shouldn't be or aren't there but should be?
Can I just clarify things? So when we went through this in June, we talked about a lot of properties, and we deferred a number. My understanding was that we would maybe return to those later this fall.
The ones that were deferred?
Uh-huh, the ones that were deferred. And so we've had some new ones coming. Do they have to wait till May, or could we address those when we do the deferred ones?
That's a question for another night. It's not on tonight's agenda, but that's one the council would need to make.
So we can address that in the future without a problem? Okay.
So I'm not, I'm actually not, I'm not actually sure what I think should happen tonight. So there are a couple on the list that don't appear like what I understood them to be when we voted on this. And I read through the minutes, and I think it just was, I think the discussion was confusing.
So specifically what's...
Specifically, the properties on, in viewpoint, on Park Circle were a couple. And then I had also just noticed a couple of just minor errors on names and addresses. On Roger Mickelson's, I think the address is incorrect. And I think it's not Chris and Sandy Howden. I think it is Chris and...
Sandra?
Nope, I think it's a different name.
Oh, Chris.
I think it is Chris and Jackie Howden. So there were a couple of minor just things that I want to fix on that where if we're disposing a property, I want to make sure we have the right address.
Okay.
And then with those ones...
Provide those to staff before the meeting?
I did not. I just have been, no, I'm noticing them. And then for the ones in viewpoint, I guess, I'm just, I guess I'm not sure what we decided.
So what do you think?
For the, I don't know what I think. Because I think that we kind of didn't address the issue of maintenance agreements like we need to, to make me feel more comfortable about some of these. And, and I think just as I was talking to some of my neighbors later who thought they had maintenance agreements, and they explained the process enough to me that I feel like they like had come to, like they were able to tell me how they went down to the city and filled out forms. So I guess I'm just not sure. I guess I want to spend a little bit more time, and I don't know if it's better to talk through them tonight or if it just, it took a long time to work through this list and make sure to check addresses and names. And so I'm not sure what the best way is to do it tonight, but I'm not ready to approve a block. But there are a bunch that I think I am ready to approve, so.
Well, I would, why don't you just go through the issues that you have? And see if we can't get it done tonight.
Okay. Do you want to go one by, like group by group to make sure we have everything covered?
I mean, I don't know. Did anybody else, was there any other inconsistencies that anybody else noticed that they wanted to talk about?
Well, that's, I think, Brittany, what you're saying is, as we kind of come up in that group, I think there was, I even left the meeting some confusion. Hey, what are we doing on some of these? We talked about, hey, do they have, if they have the property, let's specifically talk about like a viewpoint. My understanding was, I think they're, the ones that go over the ravine, there was like four that were thinking of purchasing, and there was like three that didn't, and two that encroached, and I'm going, okay, did we really resolve exactly how those seven could move forward? And I think that there's some ambiguity. What I kind of understood, and I think we just need to clarify as we go through each of the areas. Because I think we talked about at one time saying, hey, if they had encroached, the plan was, is that they, we would, you know, we'd be amenable to selling, but if they didn't, they couldn't, they had to remove their encroachment. You know, and I think you've brought up about maintenance agreements, that if someone has a maintenance agreement, what happens if we sell the property on both sides of the maintenance agreement and down the road? They don't buy. Now, we have an island for the city. And I'm just saying, I think we need to make sure we address that as a council.
Well, I thought we talked a lot about this, though, Kurt. In that one little section you were talking about, we basically said we give them a year to decide one way or the other. But if we surplus the whole thing, basically, the city would stop trying to maintain the orphan ones. Wasn't that the issue? I thought we wanted to surplus it all, but give them a year.
So I think, is this the map that's up there?
Yeah, I think it was this on the south side of viewpoint.
So here, so let's go through. We had, and I think this is important because we're selling city ground. We have four there that I think had sent a submission in that they'd like to buy.
Right.
Then you have two that were not interested, from what my memory shares, that they were not interested at this time. But both of those had encroached, and there might be a question if they had maintenance agreements at one time. And then we have the one on the very end that would like to buy. And I think what you're mentioning, Scott, is we said those four could buy, but the one on the very end could not until it was resolved. What was going to happen with those other two? Is that what we understood we were doing?
Well, I kind of thought we surplus the whole thing, and we give them another year to decide or something.
What happens, Scott, if the end decides to buy, but the two in the middle don't?
Well, we talked about it at great length, and I think what we were trying to discuss there is we just basically say the city would stop maintaining that part. But they're not maintaining a lot right now.
You are correct. We said that we would not maintain anything. Anything that we disposed of, we would stop maintaining.
Right.
That's what I understood.
So let me ask our attorney. Can we arbitrarily say we're not going to maintain land that we own? So if someone were to complain about it, we could just say tough?
I mean, if it's city property, the city can do with it generally as it wishes. There's a level of it becoming a nuisance to adjacent property owners.
Right, so if we become a nuisance, then we should take care of that nuisance just like we expect other people to take care of their nuisances.
Correct.
Okay, so we have a one, so Scott going back, just looking specifically at these, is I think it's, is it eight homes or seven homes? These seven homes, four can purchase. The two in the middle would have an option to buy. If they don't buy within one year, they have to remove. If they've encroached, they need to remove it within encroachment.
Their encroachment.
So here's the question, I'll just, because I think it's better to clarify. If they purchase, let's say, next June, and that is now in a new year, is the price changed? I mean, is there incentive for them to do it before January 1? Let's assume, because there might be a price change. Are we saying that we are locking the price in, and they get a price lock for one year? I just, I think we've got to be clear because there can be confusion that, to me, I'm going, there are incentives to buy now because we have the price locked in this year. If it goes, my thought is in January is where we try to open back up. We'd set a new price. We know what the county tax is, you know, we can come up with that, and we set a new price. But any purchase after that sticks at that price. And that might be the incentive to do it earlier, but if they have, it's up to them to do it earlier or later. But that's just, that's what my thought is.
Yeah, I mean, the other option is just to surplus the four that were most interested because they're contiguous. But, you know, it looks like five and six are maintaining the ground anyway. I don't know. It's always been a difficult problem.
But what we understood, I think, Scott's what you're saying, we surplus the whole thing.
Yeah.
We said that they could, they could have one year. What happens if the person, can the person on the end close before the other two decide to purchase? What happens, I guess, is that what we're saying? We're not going to maintain it all, so that person on the end can move forward towards purchase. And those two in the middle, if they don't move forward, we're okay. And so specifically, only on these seven?
No, aren't there three in the middle, or is it just two in the middle?
I can't tell.
I think there's, I think there's four that wanted to purchase, two that might not, and then two that do.
And then two that do.
And then, yeah, okay.
So if we don't surplus the whole thing, the two on the end can't do it. But so it's the two in the middle. We don't want to cause checkerboarding, but yet the two in the middle are already taking care of the properties. It makes, it's a difficult thing because I'm not sure the city's been doing a lot of maintenance right behind their homes. They've been maintaining the slope more. But my feeling is I just surplus them all and hope that they'll come through.
I thought, based on where we were in the discussion last time, that's where we landed. We said we were going to sell, surplus it all, and give them a year to buy.
Okay.
Brittany, how do you feel about that? Is that how you feel the discussion went concerning those properties?
Yeah, that's how I, yeah, I don't know. And this isn't, by the way, this isn't a staff problem. Just so you know, this wasn't, you put a ton of work into this. This was just details from that discussion. So it says on here on the Excel spreadsheet, "Council agreed to surplus and give owner a one-year time period to purchase." Do we need to add to that then, that, the caveat that if they don't all purchase, none of them do, or...
Ooh.
Whatever y'all think.
This, Brittany, this is a unique area because it does have some, if we don't maintain it, let's assume the city does own some property we don't maintain. I don't know if it really, you know, this is good, I don't know.
I don't, Kurt, I don't think we can say we don't maintain it because we can't let it become a nuisance.
Right, but we have to, we can't get access back there, Mayor, if we sell, I think if we sell a lot of that property.
Well, I think we can still get... Well, I think we can still get access back there.
But they're maintaining it, so the city won't have to maintain it anyway. I, it was kind of a conundrum, I think.
It's a conundrum, and I think this is a unique piece in that literally nobody else, like there's no reason for anybody else to go back there. And it, you can sell some of it off and still have the city have, have access there. I guess, the problem for me is just, what can we do that will be fair and consistent for everybody?
So let me just, and I, I do remember us kind of talking about the question, if the two don't buy, what incentive they buy if we're never going to maintain, they can, if they don't encroach, we're going to send them a letter that you've encroached and move off the property and I guess that we-
Correct, yeah.
So will we do that with like all the ones that, that we approved, staff had approved as this is surplus property, um like all these um Canterbury North, Avery, basically say you have one year, you guys are encroaching to buy this property, then if not, then we'll go after you for encroachment?
Yeah, I think that's, I think, I do remember us talking about that.
So I, I think between now and then, uh staff came up with an idea, if you're not going to buy, that we could have a third alternative, which was you could lease from us the property and establish a lease value. So if you wanted a lease from us, in which case, uh you'd, you'd pay annually a lease, we could, I think we talked about putting it in their bill.
Okay.
And uh, and then pay for the water based on the property they're leasing.
So they'd have-
That's not a bad idea.
I, I, I mean, maybe it's the same, if not, they have to enter, I guess you can't-
Exactly, three options, quit encroaching, buy it-
Correct.
Or lease it.
What is the, so let's go through the transaction, just so I kind of make sure I understand. Nathan, make sure, help, help us on this. So we have, do they all need to do a title closing at the same time or can they go in on their own? So we have, let's just assume we have this one area, what's the understanding and how they can move forward to purchase? They have to go get a surveyor and pay for that, correct?
E.
Now, I think we said that the buyer-
They do pay it, but we're the ones hiring one surveyor.
So it's consistent, okay? So you, you're asking for this or how we've done it? I assume this will go with a lot of the other parcels, I'm just trying to help make sure I understand the process. So we go, we go get a master survey across all seven parcels.
But your, your question's twofold, your question is, is in, in this particular instance, do we, would we allow uh parcels to be purchased um and other parcels not to be? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, let's just assume we have the one on the end buys-
Yes.
The, the intent is number two's going to buy, but they don't move forward to close. Do we still move on number one and number three, we both close on those? Or they have to all close at the same time?
All, all under contract, ready to go and then closing scheduled, then go.
So it's going to be all, all closing on one time, so we know that it's all done? Does the council, does that make sense? They have to get all their stuff at the title, have it all ready to go and they'll all record at one time on these, on the parcels that are all touching together, is that correct? And then tho, and the buyer's going to reimburse the city for the survey that we go out and get that as part of the purchase?
Yes.
So on these seven, I'm just, and I'm not-
Can you repeat that Kurt? I thought the buyers paid for the appraisal.
So the, but, what, what I just heard is the city is going out and getting a surveyor to go get this survey for all-
Same one.
Survey will prepare the legal descriptions.
Yes, but then the city's going to then put that on the closing statement as their share, so there are, is it eight homes here? Are we going to divide it by eight or only by those who are buyers?
It's by all the properties we're selling.
The entire city.
Oh, okay, okay. So that same survey will go do all this, we're doing.
So, now Kurt, what I just heard is different from what you said, because you said they have up to a year to, to buy it. So are you saying that nobody can buy until they all decide?
No, we put the option, they have a year, it's, that's, so that Nathan, I'm just trying to help, because we're going to get questions and complaints if we don't understand the process. So what is the thought if they have a year to buy, are we closing on the others except for those who have the option for a year? Are we waiting for a year to close?
That's what we, what we'd be looking for the council for direction for.
Okay.
Good deflection.
So um, who just said there were three options of what you could do with maintenance agreement?
The mayor.
Mayor, what were the three options?
So right now we have two, which is buy or don't buy, um and you have up to a year to buy. A third option, which staff has, uh, my, just staff came up with that I quite like, is we would establish a lease price uh for the land if you didn't want to buy. Now, after a few years, you may as well have bought it rather than leasing.
I, I was going to say, I just um, thinking about a lease price, I also thought it was a super great idea until I just heard that we're leasing somebody's land for thirteen thousand dollars for a year, right? For um, in your neighborhood. So then I feel like, then you have a lot of different lease prices for different things. Is there at all an option that you could grandfather in something like this for um these spaces who, so and, and I, I think it's really the distinction between encroachment and a maintenance agreement is interesting, and I think that residents sometimes think they have a maintenance agreement when they don't. And I know that these two residents both, I think, believe, I know they do, that they have maintenance agreements, and they told me about when they went to the city to apply for their maintenance agreement.
Do they have a copy of it?
Sadly, no. Yes, and I did just ask one about that. No, and, and they don't, and it's not, and I had asked Kelly to look before and it's not in the, in the city record, but I-
How common, how common of an issue is this, where we have someone that thinks they have a maintenance agreement, but we don't have a copy? Is this a common occurrence? Kelly, are you getting called?
Probably.
Uh, not, not very often. I, to be honest, this is the first, I like know that people are like, well, one time someone at the city told me I could put this here, and so, I mean-
And, and I did not tell Kelly this, she's like being, I didn't have a chance to talk to Kelly before about this, so I'm kind of throwing it at her. So, and, and I don't know if they did or if they didn't, I know that they, that they think they did and that they told me how they went into the city and filed for one, and I like to give people the benefit of the doubt when I can and assume good intentions, so.
So here's the suggestion, if we're looking at lease, do ten percent of what the purchase price, what, you know, cause I, I understand we just heard-
The purchase price.
You know, that we just heard that, hey, we're paying, you know, a certain fee to do a, an easement and, and there's some things that are going, you know, I'm not, because it's my neighborhood, but if we say, okay, it's two dollars and seventy-four cents to buy it, we'll lease it for twenty-seven cents, you know, twenty, twenty, twenty-seven forty, or twenty-seven, twenty-seven point four cents as a lease rate, and that's our lease rate at the time they could lock it in for a, a, a five or ten year period.
So are you saying no to the idea about grandfathering people in?
I don't know how you do that if we don't have a, an agreement.
I, I would recommend against it.
So what do you mean by grandfathering?
I just mean like let them off the hook.
I, I, I don't know.
Are you going to let everyone off the hook, all two hundred and twenty encroached?
I, you know, um, no. No, I just, I mean, and clearly this one is, this is my neighborhood and this is personal for me, so that's.
So I would recommend relative to a lease price, since it just came up in this meeting as an ad hoc thing, that you don't lock yourself into a specific percentage or anything that you think about it, um, so that it's a thoughtful decision, not, oh, this sounds good today and then two weeks we go, oh yeah, but, so we don't have to make that call today. It's, it's something that we have time to think about. Anyway, that's a recommendation from the mayor.
So let's go back through the three options and we're looking, and I'm assuming these seven, cause I think it could help us in all of our discussions, okay? They buy, they have one option, if they don't buy, they have a one-year option to purchase it. If they've encroached-
With this cost, the two seventy-four, right?
So that's going to be the question, are we okay locking the cost at the, at, if they submitted for this year and we approved it this year, that they're locked in at two seventy-four for one year? Or is it a recommendation that they, to try to incentivize for them to do it earlier versus waiting a year to, to, you know, that they, by the time the council votes to, to change the pricing? I'm, I'm open actually to either suggestion.
Is there a preference?
I, I think we're going to change the cost on a yearly basis.
Right.
And I think if we approve it in this year, I personally would lock the cost for at least a year.
Okay.
And then we can, that's my opinion.
Anybody have a strong opinion the other way?
I just don't want it to go past the year, I just, we, we have to understand the value we're working on, it's actually January of twenty twenty, you know, when, when the taxes were actually done was January twenty twenty, and I think we have to look what's the best for all the residents. I mean, it's changed quite a bit, our, our, now maybe by the time we get there, the environment will change again, I mean, we're amongst a changing environment. If that's what we, you know, we want to treat our residents fair. My concern is, let's assume now, I, I, so Scott, I'll actually support you, if it was approved in this year, they have one year by, you know, from where they would, from, if it be tonight where it's approved, to get it done at that price.
I'm fine with that, so have we decided then that they all need to buy, they don't all need to buy? Are we going to checkerboard this? What, what is this area exactly, have we?
So what I understood last time is that the four on the east can purchase immediately as, well, as soon as we get it worked out and as, since they're all willing and interested.
Yes.
And then that those other two and two more um were on hold until we talked about it in October. Um, I was just, the, the reason I brought it up tonight is because I was confused by the language on the spreadsheet that said, uh, council agreed to surplus and give the owner a one-year time period to purchase. Um, that seemed like just the same language that it put on the ones that we had for sure agreed on. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so hold on, I just heard something different than what we were talking about.
Yeah, so my memory was, is that we just surplused all eight and uh we were going to encourage those two to take advantage, and I think your other option that the mayor, I think, brought up from the staff is that maybe we can approach them, say, okay, if you don't want to want, don't want to buy them or whatever, you can lease that. I, I don't know, I would probably surplus the bunch. Now, you're, you're saying you'd only surplus the four, which is different than what I remember, and I don't have any problem with that, but.
Well, I remember, I remember thinking that we were going to surplus, surplus that for sure the four on the east would purchase-
Correct.
And then the other four we were waiting on, but I do, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm causing problems tonight.
So, but we have to walk through this transaction, once again.
It was the mayor.
If, if the other four don't buy, let's assume those other two don't buy, when does this closing happen for these individuals? We got four yeses, that we know that they, they're really considering buying-
Well, actually you have a fifth, cause the guy in the head wanted-
You actually probably got seven or six and they're out of the eight.
Yeah.
You have to, but when does it close? Are we saying that the money is going to be held until we know if all eight physically close? Are we okay if there's six to close and two do it?
I thought we understood last time that they had to start from the east and that we were okay with those four, is this what, is this what you understood? That we were okay with those four closing and then those two in the middle were holding up the process for the two on the west, because I remember saying, why are we starting on the west and not starting on the east? So that's what I thought was happening.
This, this is good for timing, this, I, I'm okay, and there's just everyone else, the four closing-
Yes.
They can close on their own as a, as a thing.
Yes.
The other four, we wait one year or earlier when the, if the four can agree before one year to close, once all four are there, they can close. Why, then at, if in a one-year period, if it doesn't close, can the other two close?
I thought according to our guidelines, we don't, we don't do checkerboard or-
Okay.
Or if you don't have access to it, unless this isn't a number.
Are we surplusing all eight or are we just going to do four? Because that's the question.
I think we're amenable to surplusing all eight, but we have two that aren't buyers.
Right.
But I want to be careful to not put neighborhoods in a situation that we had tried to avoid where you're putting some neighbors into needing these other ones to purchase in order to make it happen for them, I'm uncomfortable with that.
So if we sold the two on the end, where, how's the city get access back?
They can go, there's enough room for them to go around and behind if they sell the two on the end.
Okay.
So I mean, I would be amenable then, if you can sell the two on the end and then do a lease or something option, I guess, for those two in the middle, I don't-
Right, I just think, I don't want to, cause the two on the end, or at least the one on the end thinks he's been surplused.
Yes.
And so I, I think it's kind of bad to reverse that tonight.
Yes.
I think that's fine if there's an access point, cause that was our whole main thing is, we can't do checkerboard, cause then you can't access right there.
When we, when we surplus that property, we just have to make sure that-
Can we ask, can we ask Josh about that? Cause Josh, I, I walked this with Josh. All the residents, like he'd never been so popular. Maybe you had been.
Right now, we barely have enough room to get the tractor in where his property is.
On that corner.
If his property goes any farther to the west, we have no access.
So if we surplus it, you'd have to go due south from that corner and not-
You, yeah. I mean, you'd have to give us a lane.
Cause we're going to need that anyway, because we're not selling clear to the, we're not selling clear to the-
That has to be five feet from the trail.
To the canyon, right?
There's no trail.
No, we're not, we're not, see, we're not selling to where the drop off is, we're, we're selling, there's a buffer area there where that berm is, so we might still need to get back there for some purpose.
I mean, I, in my opinion, I would, yeah, leave us some access to get back there and at least ten feet, I'd prefer twelve feet, you know, kind of go down there to give us enough room to go down that property line.
Uh huh.
I mean, I don't want to add your complications, but your tank size is only so big in viewpoint, so you add more water.
Cause it's, and we all use coal air.
Yeah, it just compounds the problem. So I personally think, I mean, I get, getting rid of it, but don't add a problem to yourself where you're building a bigger tank because you can't hold enough water. But that's just, that's just a guy that works here that sees that as an issue, because I mean, how much space do you need right now up there to help that situation?
There's a fence there, isn't there, on the left, on the west side?
Yes, there is, and I think that's a fair question about water.
So there's a fence, so, so how much face, space do you need between the fence and where the-
I, I would like a minimum of a ten, that west fence that is the rock pits, I would like a minimum of ten.
Okay.
Um, a little bit bigger would give us access to something bigger if we had to get back there, I don't-
How much is there now?
I mean, I'm thinking a tractor, the mini, I, I would guess there's probably fifteen at the max, but there's a tree right there that makes it really complicated.
So I'm going to ask the question, I, you know, this is, like I say, a conundrum, but the two places you're trying to access are already taking care of the property, and they're the ones that are kind of a holdouts as far as I can tell, so I'm not sure.
No, it's not, it's not just those, there's more space behind those homes that we're not selling.
Well, no, you've got to get down there for the slope, right?
Yes, so to get access to that slope, so you got the two that already have maintenance, well, the two that have landscape out there, that are out there. I don't, and I, and don't, excuse me, I don't understand how much you're going to give away, but we would still, if you're going to give it all the way to the berm or if you're giving so many feet, because, yeah, depending on how much you're going to sell, I mean, if you're giving that all the way to them, then um, there's just a lot to water there, there's a lot that's going to go, that's going to be used there. So if you're only giving them fifteen feet, then we're still going to need access, I don't know how much that you're giving to them.
How was that decided? Because we have a square footage amount and a cost on our spreadsheet, so how did we decide on these, how much we were selling?
It was to the berm about, there, there were rough approximations.
Kelly, how did we decide what we were selling?
I mean, how deep is it we, is what the question?
You know what, that's the exhibit that we're trying to pull up right now.
Oh, okay.
Because we do have a water line in that property in kind of, it's kind of hard to see from here, but there is a water line in the roadish type area, so.
Down below?
Uh, no, on the top of the hill.
What do you mean, we had, okay, hold on, we have a water line back there?
And I'm, when I say water line, I mean a sprinkler main line, like, for sprinklers to get water.
To the hill, right.
To the hill.
Is it to the hill or is it going somewhere else?
It's connected to all of it, but it goes up the hill and along that on the backside.
Along the brim of the hill.
Not know that.
With wires and everything, so.
The hill need water.
We did not know that.
I'm sorry, Josh, I'm really sorry.
We can really get into this, but I mean, there's lots of complaints about the way that hill looks.
But there's nothing that's going to change the way that hill looks.
There's nothing going to change that hillside, and it's never going to be lush and green. It's the south side, it sees the sun. You could put 200 yards of topsoil on it, probably it'll all disappear into the rocks.
In fact, Josh, I, in order to save you effort, you're welcome, I called around to like the USU Extension, a bunch of places to say, what can we do with this hill? And they were like, nothing. So I guess, why are we maintaining water pipes that we're never going to use? Or are we not just not committed to never using them?
In a drought.
Well, they're still there, and I'm, I, I'm hesitant to get rid of it because things change.
Because you never know what will happen.
In 10 years down the road. And then all of a sudden, we're in a pickle because we did have water, now we don't have water. But that's, that's the way I'm looking at it, is that what happens when you are all gone and someone else comes in with a better idea?
And I think it's a fair perspective, and I think the one question.
So I guess, Josh, is this a main line going somewhere else or just a line only for the back area?
It connects, it connects off of the hill to water that hillside. So it goes to the east, down this, down, it's kind, it's hard to describe without, it kind of goes down the property line and off of the east to get water. And wires and everything that go down and through across the road.
But, I mean, is that water line going to service someone else?
No, that is.
Just for that one area behind you?
Just for that one area behind.
That's why you're saying that, hey, our flavor right now says this, but in 10 years.
There is, I mean, there is another sprinkler line back there, but when someone else encroached, they cut it and capped it. And so it stopped the watering for the next five to the west.
So I appreciate all you're doing, Josh, and I understand your argument here, but we've already kind of agreed to surplus this. These folks think they're getting the property. Now we're coming up with an argument not to surplus it.
We're not.
And I, I'm just a little bit concerned about that.
I'm not sure we're doing anything. We're just saying, don't sell all of it to the fence, which is another.
Yeah, we're not going to do anything with that slope, so I'm not sure, we, we need the irrigation line there.
I mean, I get that's what you feel like, but what happens down the road? I mean, what? I mean, I, I think that we're all wins now, but it's going to change, but.
Okay, so is the line up on the, so I've walked.
On the brow of the hill.
The little berm that's there.
Yeah, it's in that berm stuff.
So if they sold to the berm, we should be okay if we sell up to the berm?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think that's what our instruction was when we were doing it, was to go to the berm.
Yeah.
That's my understanding. That, now, we're, we're going back, you know, a month, you know, a month and a half to try to have good memory here. So up to the berm, we should be okay. So I think what we're asking.
Let me get up to the berm.
Okay.
Okay, so what is our consensus here? For sure, the four, the one on the end, are we?
So the, the, here, so let's just walk through. So I just want to make sure I understand because we've had so, four on the end, I don't think, all of us, I think, are in agreement they can buy up to the berm. Now we have two that don't want to buy, and then the other two on the end would like to buy. And are we saying we need a, if, there's, there might not be a berm there. I don't know if there's a berm. Brittany, is there a berm behind those homes? Do you remember those two on the end?
The south.
Yes.
First to the south.
Yeah, then there's.
To the brow of the hill.
A berm on the west, though. And that's where we need to draw.
So now, so now, my concern, so we've got these, these two, that's just, I just want to make sure. The two have one year to buy at the price that was agreed upon in 2021. If they do not buy, they have to either remove all their stuff that's off the encroachment or they can enter in what might be a future lease the city comes up with.
Correct.
Correct.
Could that be a lease to buy?
No. I, well, it could be anything. I would recommend just keep it really simple. So you either lease it or you buy it.
So those, those two, what, what happens in one year if they don't purchase? Either remove your encroachment or enter into lease agreement because you didn't enter into purchase agreement, correct?
I can agree with that, Kurt.
Okay.
We may be at chapter six now, but.
It's not my epistle, though.
So I'm still trying to understand. The two on the side, though, guys.
I'm sorry.
So we are saying the two on the side, though, that they have to wait for the other two houses?
That's, that's, so that, now, that's like.
If there's access, that's, that's the question.
Yeah, okay, so the, so Nathan and Kelly, so have we helped? They, we, they could, the four could buy at any time. Once the four are ready, we'll sell. The other four, what's the feeling? Should we let the two buy? Because it really matter, let me ask it, does it matter if those two close at the same? Those two will need to close at the same time? Because we're seeing if those other two. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If the other two don't close, we're saying they either remove it off their encroachment or they enter into lease agreement. And so that, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if it matters.
Does that not cause a problem in the neighborhood, though, if we say? I mean, we want to avoid contention, it's not.
Well, I guess that, that's a way for it not to cause problems.
That doesn't cause any contention.
Because those two then don't have to, their cell doesn't have to be contingent on the cell of these two people.
Correct. There's no, there should be any feeling.
Yeah, and vice versa.
Yeah, anyone that wants to buy can buy, you know, the only thing is the two on the end need to go at the same time. So there's not, you know, they, they need to close at the same. Well, if you have the one on the end close, I guess we'd have that one.
Why couldn't they close with the other four? Why does it, why does it matter when you?
I was just trying to keep the two together. It doesn't matter. I mean, what you're saying is that the one.
It's all surveyed out. Does it matter?
I guess that's true. If we're saying the other two don't have to, we can do the same if one of those don't close. What about if the other four don't close? Let's assume one in the middle. I guess we're saying we're still going to have access, we're okay, okay?
Yeah.
Everyone okay with that?
Okay. Quick clarification, just on the visual that you see right there.
It's clear as mud.
Oh, yeah, quick. Just because Josh is talking about access, so does that mean from that northwest corner of that one?
If those other two do not buy, we need to have access to that, that area if we have to maintain it. So that would make.
Josh wants 10 feet from the fence from, on the west. So you've got the blue line all the way up to the fence, you need to back it off 10 feet.
So when it comes to getting a survey, we are going to survey it, making it so they would have access. So we would have access.
So let's make it clear, the problem is, let's assume that the other two uh, don't buy, we have to have the survey where it's shorter. Let's assume those other, the two on the end close, and then those other two want to buy, then they have to go back in and close again on that little piece, which we'd have to have a survey done again. You, I mean, because, because they didn't buy all the way to the, what we're showing here, we had to keep a little easement.
Well, I, I think we need that easement regardless. If everybody buys or not, because.
Yeah, you need the easement for the hill.
For the hill, yeah. So we're saying where the blue line is on my whole left, there needs to be at least 10 feet off of that.
Yes.
On that west side so they can access it, and that makes sense.
So we'll just forever own it and it's not being disposed of?
Correct.
Forever and ever.
But they still are able to purchase quite a large section there, right?
Yes, yes, I'm just trying to clarify for what's a survey.
But you have to tell them we have to have access for the hill.
Okay. Are there any other ones that we saw an issue with? That an issue?
So one, up by Brendan Nish, um, we can just walk through that. There was some question after the meeting as to what we'd decided. Yeah, so just, yeah, click on.
Sorry, this is just an image, but.
Right, so, so right there, Brendan Nish is the, the, where her cursor is right there. Um, on those properties, we said, go ahead and sell the trail easement all the way up to the north. But that would have to be consecutive, right?
Yes, because we, yeah. So what you're saying is that the, if there's a gap, then they can't buy. They all need to close at the same time.
Well, they don't need to close, they just need to close from.
The Nish side?
From the bottom to the top.
Okay.
So the top could close a year from now or never.
So you want them to start from the bottom and just kind of go.
It just has to be contiguous because otherwise we don't have access.
We'll never have the money to build a trail or anything in there.
Right, we've, we've, we've abandoned the plan to build the trail there.
We've already sold the other ground to the south of that, where the trail was at.
Right.
Okay.
I think that makes good sense.
And I, I thought that was what we decided, but there's a little bit of confusion there. So the, the, some of the confusion might be that the two property owners on the north did not ask.
Correct.
But we, but we can surplus that and make it available if they want to.
If they want to. But it has to move from.
But on the closing, let's just go through, we don't, we're going to go get a survey for each one of these properties, where the property lines at. They can close, as long as it's starting at the south, they could start closing one at a time.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I would think that would be the case.
Okay. Just to make sure we're looking at everything, um, this is the Beacon Hills one. Would you mind just going to the Canterbury and Avery? I think you had, just to make sure we know what we're looking at here. And I don't know if you have a map that you had, it seems like you guys had something which had outlined what we were selling.
And this is the one that we didn't, it was kind of a consensus before the June 15th meeting.
I just want to make sure because I can't see that picture very.
That's all along Murdock Canal.
Yeah, but you're not, there's a, there's one that we were trying to get a access to a trail back in. I just want to make sure.
On the south end. You might want to, we decided, I believe we decided not to surplus the, the access.
It was only on the back side, but not the side.
Not the, not.
That's why I just want to make sure what our maps look like.
Down, I, that's probably it, right.
Is that a, yeah, that, okay, not the side, so we're not surplusing the side. Do you have your map that shows what we're, that's, you guys had like the other one, just to make sure what you have down that we're selling?
I'm trying to, this is actually, just a second.
Now, in that particular instance, both neighbors had encroached already.
Oh, that was the one back there.
Right there, yeah.
Okay. We're not selling there on that south side.
Because that's a trail access, is what you're saying?
Yes.
So we're whole lot selling that.
If and when the workman property ever develops, there's supposed to be a trail from there going up. The city center trail is supposed to come down to the workman property. Come, and this would be their access. The workmen's also, there'll be some other roads coming in, and there'd probably be, and there might be two trails coming to try to connect up to here.
Now, there are some additional challenges going north where people have already.
They've already seriously encroached.
So, um, but we're not going to exacerbate the problem. We're just going to let it.
When it's time, that's when the problem will happen.
So we're basically surplusing the property behind the homes, directly behind, but not on the, on that one side where there could be a trail.
Correct.
And, and I would. They're already maintaining that area.
Some of them are, some of them aren't.
Okay.
Okay, then, this is.
This would be another one where we say if you've, something.
Okay.
Because we'll have access to it regardless of.
We can get access in it because we can come off the trail and let.
We'd have the three options.
Now, I think we had property to the north. Was that in the, is that some more Avery property? Avery Lane?
Oh.
Okay, there.
It's all of that?
And you were just doing only behind the homes, right? Because I think there's supposed to be another.
And there was some restriction on the.
Far north.
The, I, was it all the way around or just some of the way far north where that uh?
Set in place was.
That, where that whole district facilities easement is, it runs along the entire trail. And so we're just matching up to that.
Right.
That's right, it sat on the Murdock Trail.
It's the district facilities easement that we're going up to the boundary of what we would sell. And is it one of those lines that we can see?
Yeah, so those, if you can tell, those little red arrows is, that's pointing to the property line and then the end of the district facility easement. So it's probably a lot less than they were expecting, but that's just.
It is what it is.
Recommendation we got from Provo River, so.
So I'd like to make a little comment that I think a lesson we've learned here is that I think when we have a developer command and they develop a piece of property, if there's proposed trials, they need to put the trial in. Because what we've had here is a lot of problems created because the trials were proposed but never put in.
Correct.
And so now we're spending time 10, 15 years later trying to straighten out the mess. So, you know, we're building out the city, but I think if there's a trial that's supposed to be there, they need to put it in when they put in the development because it's really hard for the city to come back and say, we're going to put it in. Then we have to try to surplus it, and that causes all those kind of problems. So I just think going forward, we need to be sure that if there's a proposed trial, they put it in. So I like trials, but there's a problem when we don't have money to put them in and maintain them. And that's, that's their responsibility, I think, not ours.
Kelly, can you tell me exactly then, um, what the process looks like going forward from tonight? Are these prices that are here, are they set or is that dependent on the surveyor? What exactly happens from here on out? But Nathan looked at me funny.
I think it'd be based on.
So the prices.
Like.
The price is set.
Well, no, the price is set, but the measurements.
When it comes to.
Yeah, the measurements that are here.
Surveyor, at least from the policy, the understanding is we will hire a surveyor. And then we're also basically the overall cost of this, all of the properties to be surveyed as well as the title company costs, we're going to take that total, divide it all out by how many properties were approved, not necessarily how many residents are purchasing. How many were approved, we'll divide that out and then have a flat fee for when they purchase. They have to pay that surveying and title company fee.
So there will be some cost to the city depending on how many people purchase.
Yes, which the idea is in the future, if everyone ends up purchasing, it ends meet, but might take a few years.
But the price is only good for, like we were talking for one year. Okay, can we move on to Apollo Way, which had that little circle? I just want to make sure there was clarification so we know exactly what property on Apollo Way is actually going and how it's working.
I thought it was four lots from the one cor, or from the one end.
Or one, or, I can't remember.
From the one end.
There's six down on Apollo Way.
Were those ones on the list that we were revisiting in the fall?
No, we surplused them. We surplused the four from the corner, I thought.
Yeah, but there's six on here. That's why I just want to make sure.
Six, okay.
Yes, you surplused six on the bottom and then you didn't.
We didn't do any of the other.
We deferred on the.
Yes, you didn't.
They weren't contiguous.
Okay. And, and we don't need to do anything special because if one doesn't buy, we still have access?
Yes, you got the trail and, and all the stuff on the north.
It's their problem with the sprinklers.
Yeah.
Josh, you.
Would you mind going to the park circle? Oh, go ahead, I'll let Josh, then we can get ready to go to park circle.
Okay, so on this one, the sprinklers water from both sides of the trail. So if one does not buy, we have a problem. That's kind of, it's an R or nothing to make the sprinklers work. So your sprinklers are watering across the trail from both sides. So essentially, they run down the backs of their houses and water across. So if one does not purchase, then we're going to, the hard part that, that I think we're going to have at this one is they don't understand, like, they think they're just going to have to fix the sprinklers on their side of the house, but the sprinklers across are going to have to be fixed as well because it's no longer going to work.
So we can't, what you're saying is don't checkerboard here because the sprinklers won't really cover.
So this is an R or no, this is.
In my opinion, it's an R or nothing because if one goes out, then like the sprinklers, there's going to be some serious work to make that work. And they need to understand that it's on both sides of the trail, the sprinklers are going to have to be fixed, not just the ones behind their house, the ones across the trail as well.
But, and all due respect, Josh, this was surplused back in like 2017.[1612.48] These people have been looking at the sprinkler issue with Todd for years.
Right.
And they, and they just said they're gonna do those five or six homes on that one end and that they would take care of the sprinkler issue.
And, and I don't think they understand the cost that's behind there. They think that it's just something that they can move. There's gonna be the main line and some wires and I've tried to explain to them that the cost is phenomenal when it was the whole thing, that they couldn't accept the cost.
Well, I think surpleasing has always been contingent on them resolving the sprinkler issue problem.
Right, but I would prefer that it comes back with a plan and all the sprinkler plans are, we're gonna have a mess because.
Well, they're supposed to do commercials, they're supposed to have a commercial guy coming into it. It's not supposed to be the residents doing it, it's supposed to be a commercial guy. So maybe I ought to add on this one, they need to come and have a sprinkler plan re-approved prior to sale.
Right, they can't just.
It needs to be a plan so it can be set out because what one guy comes out and wants to do and another guy wants to come do is two different things. We want it to our standard.
Well, we have to say, because we're taking it, if it's said the city, we're still keeping it. And what yours thinks, we might have to change some of our heads. They have to change them for us so it needs to meet our code.
And they're paying for it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and they've, I don't think they maybe understand the cost, but they understand the issue because they've been thinking about.
I don't think they understand the whole plan, that we need a plan that is specified and split that.
I thought they had, can you clarify? I thought from my correspondence with them that they had met with their landscaper and you, no? Recently, like in, like the last two months?
No. Like, I met with them a year or so ago out there in kinda, but they had one landscaper, but they've never, I don't know that one, any of them's filed through because they kinda wanna just do whatever they want to when they come out there. We want a plan so they can bid off of that plan so it can be specialized to that plan so it goes in as we want, not what they do in necessary.
I would move that we have to have it, the plan has to be approved by Josh. The sprinkler plan has to be approved and the equipment that's going in there. Just to make sure we're taking care of the city since they're messing with our.
Because we told them we're gonna surplus it.
It's already surplus.
Yeah, they need to make the contingency.
Well, it was surplus, but it was contingent on the whole circle and, and they're changing.
I thought we told them last time.
Last time.
That we do those six homes.
We did.
Yeah.
But I think we need to make sure that they have an approved sprinkler plan approved by our parks department.
And I'm agreeable with that, I just don't think.
And this is an all or nothing, so these six together or?
Bigs is a.
Yeah, the six together, but they gotta have the plan.
We're saying six altogether or nothing, is that six altogether or nothing?
Yes.
Right, and I think the six were pretty much in agreement.
Yes.
It was signed off by you, Josh, that sprinkler plan. Make sure you look at it and it's good to go.
If it's contingent on being signed off by you, then you, then you.
And it still preserves the trail. And the trail's still there with five feet on the south side, yeah.
Hey, Brittany, any questions on the viewpoint? Does everything seem to be clear on viewpoint?
Kelly, will you tell me what you heard?
No, while I'm just even talking, we have a triangle piece too.
No, I, yeah.
Well, okay, go ahead.
Well, I just want to make sure we're all, yeah.
We're clear.
Yep.
Okay, I listened to the recording today, basically.
Are you saying what she heard tonight?
I just want to be clear on what we decided tonight.
Or what she decided.
Okay.
Just on this one, we have up there right now, it's only the one.
Okay, so the four on the east are free to close. Yes, in viewpoint, on that south side. They're free to close when they want to and when the purchase agreement is ready. And then the other four, okay, I'm glad you're clarifying this because my notes are kinda jumbled too. If all four agreed, then all four can do it, sure, great. But then if, oh heavens, now I'm like, feel like I'm on the spot, thanks Brittany. And then the other two that currently want to purchase, they cannot purchase until the, a year has passed.
That's, that's not.
Is that wrong? Okay.
Okay, so here's.
Please correct me.
Here's, here's, can I just take a stab at?
Yes.
Please, so we're surplusing all eight.
All eight.
Pieces of property up to the burn with a 10-foot allowance on the west side.
Oh, yeah, that too.
Okay.
And so.
They can close whenever they want, but they have up to a year to buy at the current price, after which they have to either remove their encroachments if they've encroached or if, and this is if, if the council comes up with a lease policy, they can, we can execute a lease with them for the property. So they'll, they have two options for sure now and a possible third, okay, which is lease. But right now, it's, you have up to a year to buy or remove your encroachment.
So you're okay with the checkerboarding on this?
Because we have access.
Because, okay.
We have access.
Which will be the same on that Avery as well.
Yep.
All right.
Good job, Mayor. Now, can we, can we go to, Brittany, what about the triangle piece here? There's that little triangle piece in viewpoint, is everything clear on that?
I feel like everything is clear and good with that triangle. And then there was that one other one in viewpoint that's on the north.
That had the basketball standard that I.
That you like, yes. I am, I think all those are, I'm good with.
So, on the one on the north, it was, it was go to the corner and straight up, right?
That's what we said.
That's what we said.
Which, I mean.
Go, move, move this way, yeah. That property right there.
Yes, straight up.
Yes, just go straight up, straight up from that corner.
And then that triangle piece divided the way that they proposed.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Can, can we, would you mind if we go to Chris and Jamie Johnson? They are in Mercer Hollow on Cypress Drive. Just want to make sure I understand what's being sold there. Is it just a little triangle or straighten that out from the one corner to the other, is that right?
I thought we just, yeah, that's what I understood.
I just want to, I'm just verifying, okay? Can we go to Park Circle? That is, yeah, Park Circle, that, I guess we, that's the one some viewpoint, right? So we've already done that one. Can we go to Windsor Meadow? Please. I think we've said all six goodbye and there was maybe one or two that had not inquired and we were okay because we still had access, correct? Same thing as viewpoint?
And we want to preserve a nice trail corridor.
It was within five feet of the trail.
Yeah, it was five foot, because there's not a lot of area on the north.
Now, there's a lot of area on the north. And then I think the other question was the Steve Rock area. And I think that one was kinda clear, what was going on there. If there's any other questions?
So on that one, let me just state it so that I understand it. We are surplusing the property north of Steve Rock's house. They're not encroaching because we're maintaining it, but they, they can purchase it if they want. Then on the west portion, we're surplusing that all the way up to the north and we're asking the Howdens, and I'm not sure what the name of the property owner on the east is because I think on the property it's listed as Twin Peaks Holding. But I, they, they wanted to buy that, but I, I think in this and other cases, when you have adjoining properties, that you should give both parties an opportunity to buy. And there's a little, it's kind of a bow, but the, on the north end, which you're not seeing here of the property. And there's another property owner up there that, that could be impacted and we listed them, is the Guymans.
Can we?
So you're saying this one should be deferred then till we decide?
No, 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 I would just, we were surplusing it, but you need to work out, see that little?
Some agreement.
Bell?
Yes.
So we just need to make sure that the property, adjacent property owners are okay with this.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
Mayor, can I go to one or two others?
Sure.
Zach Eastman up in Shamberry Fields Platte C on Louisiana Street. Just want, I just want to make sure, I, I think I've seen all these, but I just wanna. It's just on the side there by where we're gonna have.
That was a trail corridor and that's another trail that we've already surplus part of it.
That came across.
But there's no existing trail there.
It's just a corridor.
Okay.
And then the other property, sir, I think it functions as a detention basin.
Yeah.
But that, that trail corridor does not, is that my understanding?
Where, what's the property above that, who's the owner?
That's Perry Homes. Yeah, that's what we approved a couple of months ago.
Okay. Okay, and then we have another parcel in Dry Creek Bench, Alan and Ashley Anderson on Bull River Road. They can go within five feet of the trail.
Isn't this one where they thought that they owned that piece and it was?
The previous owner, yeah.
Okay, this is where the trail, okay, this is where the trail is not, the Heimlich City has a trail that's not all the way on their property, so we've had it kinda closed off, is that right?
No, it's, that's further to the west. This is, this is separate from that issue.
This, this is where the previous owner had an open space maintenance agreement, but then ended up putting a fence up, which obviously wasn't in the open space maintenance agreement. And then he purchased it thinking that was part of his property.
Well, it's within five feet of the trail, correct?
And so he came forward and was very honest about it, yeah.
Okay.
So this, this property along with the other ones, if you, if they buy, we are telling them, if you want to use the property you just purchased as additional property for setback purposes, you're gonna have to consolidate that with the, and they'll have to do that with the city or the county.
Oh, that has to be with us.
So they'll have to come back to you and ask to come.
Unless, unless their lot is on, is on a parcel that isn't included in a subdivision, which I honestly don't think any of these are, not. So all of these people, if they want to put structures or do anything other than landscaping or a fence, they're going to have to go through the plat amendment process, which I hope that most neighbors in the same subdivision can go in on it together and split those costs, because it's easier on our end and on the. The plat amendment fee is $550, like the review fee.
So that's for one or?
That's for a plat amendment application, so we can do multiple properties within the same subdivision if.
For $550?
Yes.
So if, if in viewpoint, if all of them wanted to combine their lots.
And go on it together, yeah. They, they would have to have a surveyor, engineering company or whatever put it on an actual plat, which the surveys will also, will already be done, so that'll probably be a lot cheaper than starting from square one. But that will be an additional cost that they'll have to pay for.
So when, when we go through the process with them, we'll, we'll make a point of, of mentioning that.
Make sure they know that, that would be great.
We, meaning, not me, you, right?
Six.
Or maybe we could have some document that's descriptive of what's next beyond. What's next, if you want to do something, we'll just have a one-page. If you want to, this is what you need to do next.
That's fair, yeah, we can do that.
Just one question up on viewpoint, that little triangle area, do they all need to close at the same time? And we do have a trail there, but if they don't close all at the same time, I mean, it's, it's kind of funky boundaries.
I think yes, but I think they're ready to.
Yeah, did you guys just get that, understand, we need to have that triangle piece up in viewpoint all close at the same time.
That piece right there.
Yeah, that piece right there. Just because it's, it's, it has so many different boundary issues.
Um, I'm sorry. Kelly, can you tell me what I, what we decided, what you heard us say about Apollo, Apollo Way? I just want to make sure I have the right thing there as well.
Okay.
That's the circle one.
Okay, so the horseshoe trail.
The one we had Josh come up on.
The six?
Yes.
It's all or nothing and they have to get a sprinkler plan or landscaping plan approved by Josh before any purchase.
But they follow nothing of the six, right?
Of the six.
But I just want to make sure that we're clear that in the proposal that I saw with the six, there were five on one end and one on the other end.
That's where I was.
They're not. I thought it was six on the south.
They're not all six together, so I'm looking at their proposal right now. And it's five on one end and then one on the other end.
I assume that's property 10.
And I think we just surplused the five on the one end.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because we said six, but it's five on one end and one on the other.
Properties are on the south end, that's what's.
The five on the south end.
Yeah.
Because we didn't surplus the one on the other one because it wasn't contiguous.
Yeah, but we said six, so I just wanted to make sure. And then it says, um, they have a landscaping proposal and the, in the one that they sent us, they said, um, let's see, just recently, they met with a landscaper who wired, traced the affected property and they talk about what they found and they say that this would all be contingent on, the homeowners will hire a landscaper to relocate the pressurized irrigation line and sprinklers. The landscaper's plan will be approved by the city before work is to begin and the city engineer will approve of the construction. And so that's in their proposal. And they have some specifics here about what they think the line is, so I don't know if, if you've seen that yet, Andy, because I know that this was kinda before you, so maybe I'll send you their proposal so that you, or Josh, either one of you.
Or both.
Or both, but it's five on the one end, so we're only.
Only five, yeah.
Surplusing the six.
Five tonight.
Yeah, the six, yeah.
You'd send it to us both, so that we could review it.
Is there anything else that needs to be clarified?
Sorry.
No, that's perfect.
Hey, Brittany, it's better to ask because that's where we have questions later. It's better to make sure clarification happens.
I'm good.
So based on our discussion tonight, then, we have disposed of properties that affect 55 different homeowners, which is a lot. I'm glad we went through and clarified.
Clarified.
And the total, rough, rough total is about 3.8 acres of ground. That's rough, subject to all kinds of changes.
And the money generated will go back into the open space neighborhoods for maintenance of parks and trails. Has that been the consensus?
Provided that the land was in open space.
Yes, oh yes, that's true.
The parcels that are in open space, we already made an agreement, those will go back into open space special services district fund or the, and it's really meant for.
Capital improvements.
Like you said, playgrounds or some, more of a capital improvement.
Right, but if they're not in open space, that can go into the general fund park account, basically, the capital improvement.
Can I, can I ask, can I, can I ask a question about that, Kurt? When you said that the intent would be for that to go into like capital expenses, like landscaping and playground equipment, is that what you said?
Yeah, that, I mean, it, we sold the ground, we originally, we've already voted on this that where it'd go. It's just, I think, do we want to just have it go back to the, we don't have a special open space fund, I mean, it's.
No, I, I agree with what you said, I guess I'm just asking, we didn't, like, I guess I think the residents should have a say as to if that's what they want to spend their money on. Like, I don't think that that, the money that is used from that sale in an open space neighborhood should be used to fund things that should already be funded anyway. Like, I think that should be money for the community to use how it wants to. Otherwise, it's not actually a benefit to the community because it's paying for something that should already be done.
I don't understand that. Give me an example.
So like, to say that if viewpoint ends up with, for example, $10,000, to say that that $10,000 should use, be used to fix sprinklers or something in viewpoint where that is an expense that viewpoint is already paying $20 a month to have subsidized by the city. I guess I just would like clarity that the residents can decide how to spend that money and that it's not necessarily.
Did we ever see residents who were gonna vote on how that money was spent?
I guess I'm, that's what I'm asking.
My assumption was that it went into the open space district as a whole.
Right, that was my understanding.
Not the specific.
So 18 neighborhoods could partake of it.
Yes.
Yeah. Because we're all paying that fee. So we're generating money from selling some open space in open space neighborhoods. So my understanding is it go into all the 18 neighborhoods. So if you got playgrounds here and different things. So if we're not selling open space from open space neighborhoods, I would think it would go into the general fund. Is that, but you're thinking each individual neighborhood would like to use some of their money as, that they generated by sales?
Yeah, I, I feel like that would be fine, I feel like that's how we decided to redo the tennis court in.
Well, they're this circle.
Kim, help me out here, what do you think?
We did, sort of, but they had way more money than that that we generated.
But I mean, that doesn't change the principle.
We decided the tennis court was a safety issue and we were gonna pay for it.
And the tennis court was crumbling and so it was kind of a, an issue where you had to do a maintenance because of some safety issues. But, so Brittany, I just want, I did not understand that we're thinking, that, we're just gonna use a random, $10,000 generated in viewpoint, are you thinking that $10,000 was gonna stay in viewpoint? I'm with Scott, I always thought the money went back to the special service district fund and it stayed amongst all 18 open space subdivisions.
So the people in viewpoint could come and say, "Hey, we'd like this project" and that could be prioritized and like the people in Canterbury Circle did. But that was kinda my understanding, but I mean, I'm open for discussion.
I think that's what we did to allow flexibility. So then we didn't have a dedicated source of funding for one neighborhood and inflexibility there. But I see where you're going because that is, you know, open space being sold in the neighborhood, generating money for that neighborhood. But we decided as a whole, just to put it in open space to allow more flexibility and then allow neighborhoods, if they see areas in which need improvements, then they can come and solicit it.
Yeah, and I think that's right, and I think we did that first, flexibility first half. I guess what I'm saying is I don't think the money from the sale should be used to fund maintenance that should be done anyway.
And I agree with that.
Okay.
That's my way. And then I, I do think that, I hope that neighborhoods are able to use some of it, not all of it.
But you're thinking it should be used to enhance the parks and trails or things that, or like build playgrounds or something that there's no funds to do anyway, is that what you're saying?
Um, yeah.
That's why I kinda said a capital situation, so it's not a maintenance we're trying to use the money for. We use it more for a capital expenditure to, and that would be an improvement. I mean, we're, we're improving those open space areas.
Windsor Meadow, I mean, when their toddler. Windsor Meadows, I mean, when their toddler playground equipment is in dire need of replacement, and I think that'd be an excellent area in which to replace. I mean, it definitely needs improvement there.
There might be an area in Windsor Meadows that they're missing some trail area.
Yeah.
We could go and, I mean, I'm just, we can look at, now, personally on the trails, I think we're trying to keep that funded away from the open space special service district. They have it funding out of the, our quarter, the quarter cent tax that's coming from the transportation where we get forty percent. I'm saying, I would, I think it's more for the playgrounds, or if there's some other improvements, they're more capital in nature. Is that what everyone's kind of thinking?
Yes.
Yes, I think that's, that's good.
I just don't want it to be spent on maintenance that should be done anyway.
Okay, Steph, how do you suggest we make a motion here to resolve or to amend the resolution that was done? Rob, do you have any suggestions?
Is it better to continue it and have it written up, correct? Well, Rob said yes, that he thinks it's better to continue and bring it back with it done correctly.
Kelly, something with the changes as discussed.
I think Kelly wants an answer tonight, because she's got all these people calling her, right?
Because they're calling on a daily basis.
No, they're calling days, we need to make a decision, because it's getting late in the season.
Couldn't you say something with the changes as discussed?
Yes.
That's up to Rob, Rob, could you?
I think we clarified things.
Because I think that, Brittany, you made some very good clarifying statements to verify back what we understood.
You know, I feel like in the minutes, Stephanie, everything should be pretty obvious, and if not, we can listen back at the recording. Like, I, I mean, the only real changes or clarifications were regarding Highland Hills, like in Apollo Circle, and then viewpoint, which is the way things are being sold, with the checkerboarding. And then, like, a couple with, like, the one with Chris Howden, just making sure that other property owners are reached out to before things are sold. But other than that, everything was pretty much the way that it is seen here.
So on the south end of viewpoint, I think the mayor gave a really clarifying statement, and I would recommend that we follow that.
I agree, so, let me ask, we have some property, so that, this is to help, so I understand. We have some property that, that we have on the list, on this list tonight, that people did not acquire about buying, some on Avery Lane. So is the understanding is that they come in the next year, they can buy it, and it's only approved for one year? Or is this approval go on past that, but the price would change, that the pricing's only set for one year? What's the, so is approval to sell good for, for that, but the pricing gets reset on, on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two?
To my understanding, it's an actual property disposal, so once, it's just kind of like Apollo Circle, where once it's approved, it's approved.
But not the price, you guys think that we are, but no, I'm okay with that.
The price is set for the next year.
Yeah, and but then, then if they don't buy it within one year, the price will then adjust after that one year sun sets from when we approve it tonight. So I guess tonight's the twentieth, on July twentieth, twenty twenty-two, if they have not bought, it all adjusts to the pricing of what it is at that year they buy.
And then are we saying after that year, Mark, if they haven't bought the property and they're encroaching, then we'll start?
We will send letters that they need to remove their encroachment, or if we've entered to a lease agreement, if that's what the council at that time decides to do. That, does that help you get a little clearer?
Yes, it, yes, it is clear.
I think Brittany should make the motion.
I think so, too, and I'll second it.
I want you to put some in the motion about Scott doing something for us, has to do a backflip for us.
Oh, that seems like a good.
You'd have to haul me to the hospital.
You have admitting privileges, that seems like.
That's right.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I move the city council approve a resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen with the changes we discussed, is that good enough?
I'll second it.
Motion by Brittany, second by Scott, we are ready to vote.
And I would say, Kelly, and thank you, Kelly and Nathan and Erin and Andy and Josh, I know this is a huge undertaking and a huge hassle and would be much easier for everyone if we just ignored it, right? But I, I appreciate the hard work, especially Kelly, I know you've had a busy month, so thank you for.
And I want to say ditto, because I've been involved in open space things for over a decade. And so we're finally coming to some resolution on some of these properties, and I think it's great. And I have to give, you know, thanks to the mayor and the rest of the council, because it's been kind of a long road.
Amen.
I just have one more question, because we did have Carrie come up and, and talk about it. So we will not now be opening up application for another year.
That was the plan, can't always change the thought.
I, I think, you know, what you're bringing up, I think is a very good discussion, and I understand it's just a, we haven't had it down, but we kind of said that we've put out a time for them to submit for their, their things for that one year. I just get nervous if we open it, we're going to, we'll, we'll have another meeting, I guess we could have again a whole bunch in October going through. I think it's better, because we still have some we've deferred, that we need to handle, and those are the tougher ones.
To touch on those first, and then maybe think about the process and whether it's better to do it all at once, once a year? Or do it little by little as they come? It's just something I'm thinking about.
Well, I'm just going to throw my two cents here. I think there's always an exception to every rule, and yes, it's bad because it sends a precedent, but I think the family that came before us today has some mitigating circumstances. And, and occasionally, I think, because this is such a complex situation, we may want to make an exception occasionally. Uh, you know, I think, I think we need to be, what can I say? I think we just need to be sensitive about individual homeowners sometimes. And I know, I agree with this once a year deal, and, but we're going to talk about some more properties. I, I just think they have kind of a. Please present the idea.
We did talk about, and I, I don't know, we didn't necessarily resolve it, but an approach going forward to say we would then, once this year was done, start subdivision by subdivision, because they're all different, and they have different rules. And, and look at them individually and say, okay, how are we going to deal with this subdivision with orphan stuff? Because it's, it's a big, it's complicated and challenging.
Right.
And I.
Complex.
I, I would just recommend, I think that's a, that was a good, that was a good thought, I, I think we should.
Well, it's better, because that way, as a council, we even could go visit that subdivision, okay? Now, you know, if we look at Windsor Meadows, let's just use, they had different fillings there, because of the way their sidewalks were done, you know, everything, they're different than other subdivisions. So if we go, we even could do, those go visit, or we even could make a time, and then when we come back, we have a better visual of what we're doing.
Because what staff did was do the relatively easy ones, okay? Here's, here's what we think we could sell, and we've taken care of those. Now, everything else is going to be kind of a policy-based thing, how do you want to handle this? Because if you go through an, an open space subdivision and start selling off all of its parts, you've just created potentially something different than what was originally.
Right.
There, and it, it needs to, I don't think you can piecemeal that.
But I think the consensus has always been that we're not going to sell parks, and, and we've come to a recent consensus that we're going to be really careful about ever selling paved trails, so we've eliminated that.
Trail corridor.
Yeah, so, but, you know, eighteen neighborhoods, they're all different, we probably ought to prioritize them and try to do two or three a year at least, because if not, this just kind of gets drawn out.
Let's go back, what the question was at hand, is do we want to add any, it's not just the one, one individuals, I think, that came talked, I've, I've heard of two or three others that are starting to inquire. How do we state that they, you know, who gets to come in, who doesn't? That's, my only concern is, is I know that it's not just one that's inquired, I think, Mayor, you've talked to me about two or three that have inquired about, you know, we even had another resident that we gave the award to, Mr., you know, the, the chosen. He even inquired, I mean, so I'm going, okay, how do we make that decision, how we cut it off versus what we allow to come? And, and what's, you know, and I understand about hardships, I think that, and I, but, you know, we have to look, I think everyone can come up with some type of hardship.
That's true, but one hardship she's went through, she sat through three and a half hours listening us talk.
That's hard.
What's the recommendation, do you guys want to open it up for others to come in this fall? I mean, and, and you're going to be trying to handle some of the hard stuff.
Well, we're going to have a discussion on the deferred, I kind of, I don't know, I kind of lean towards only the two or three others if we needed to.
And how do we decide who the two or three are?
I don't know, I think there's one here tonight.
No, I promise you there'll be ten more.
I'm sure.
I see, you open it, I mean, Kelly, what do you think is going to happen if we say we might open up a little bit for the fall?
You know, I've, I've already had a few that have asked me, and I, I have a couple that are waiting for twenty twenty-two already, so I'm just.
Your message was that they need to come into the twenty twenty-two time period.
Yes, and then when they give a rebuttal, where it's, this is dire and I need this now, I reference it to y'all, and I'm kind of just like, if the council wants to talk about it or to discuss it, they're obviously welcome to. And that's actually why this lady was here tonight, is just because she explained that to me, and that's just kind of, if y'all want to discuss it with the deferreds or with Windsor Meadows as a subdivision, that's y'all's call.
So what does us all want to do? I love, I love you, I love that, so it's.
Well, this isn't actually on the agenda, so we, we can't make a decision on it.
But we can have a discussion, I know.
Have a discussion, but we can't.
I think there's some exceptions to every rule, I would have a few open this fall, and then kind of gear most people to twenty twenty-two, but I think there's some good exceptions.
I just get worried about what we're going to do to Kelly, I, I just, I, I get worried that how does she decipher what comes through? And I guess everyone can always approach the council, but.
My concern would be, and it's not going to be my concern, so it doesn't really matter, but, um, if you start carving up something like Windsor Meadows without taking the holistic view on it, by default, you're now creating policy by looking at one small piece instead of the whole thing. So that, I, I think if you do that, I think you need to look at all of Windsor Meadow. And say, what's the policy for all?
I think, especially, I think what I was hearing tonight, I don't think it's just a one parcel, it, it will affect so many, and then what the decision might happen in that whole area.
And I did hear that they would want to take away a trail.
I think I did hear they were trying to.
And, and I thought our policy was, if it's a trail, we're not taking them out.
I wonder if it'd make sense, I'm sorry, Nathan, to interrupt, I wonder if it'd make sense that maybe every four months, we take a neighborhood and maybe try to do three neighborhoods a year or something.
Well, I, I think, we're not done with what you have now, so.
That's what I'm saying, we still got a couple of bites of the apple we got there.
There's two, there's two big things that you have to address, you have to address encroachments, and you have to address the deferred. So my suggestion would be, get through those, and then reassess where you're at. Those are two pretty big lifts, and, um, I mean, we started in October this last year, so we're in, what, July? Seven, ten months, so, um.
We're not done yet.
And we're not, and we still have those maintenance agreements and deferreds to talk about.
I'm just saying, we got a lot of deferred, and we got to really kind of take some time to.
Right, so I think, I think we owe it to, to finish those first, and address the encroachment issue, and how you guys want to address those before we start opening up to others.
I agree.
Can I ask you a question, Rob? Now that we've started discussing some of the property where there's encroachment issues, start a timeline, and is there any danger of an implied easement or implied ownership because of possession?
No, not, not particularly, especially when the discussion of encroachment is, the city is aware of it, and we're figuring out a good policy for how to address it, and we're discussing options. Not a, we love encroachments and we don't care about them. The fact that it takes time to work through that doesn't give any kind of prescriptive or adverse right.
I mean, I know this isn't another state, but when I lived in another state, the church had a problem, because people were using the parking lot. And then they came back and said, this is an implied usage or easement, because you haven't done anything about it. And that concerns me, because just like the church, the city is seen as moneybags or unlimited resources, and that people will come after us. So it seems to me that there would be some sort of an advantage to issuing a letter now stating, this is not your property, we're dealing with this, and when we come to a conclusion, you will receive a letter with our decision. Or is that unnecessary and too harsh?
I don't know that it's necessary, I don't know, I also don't know that if it's too harsh, I might just be fine. But in terms of just legal ramifications, the law is very clear that you can't claim government property against adversely. There's limited exceptions to that, but property that's being used for public purposes, parks, trails, similar kinds of open space, you can't adversely possess it.
So is that just private property issue and not, not relevant to government?
Primarily just a private property issue.
Okay, got it, all right, thanks. Okay, we are an hour and twenty minutes later than I thought would be for mayor and council staff communication items. We're going to have, start off with Erin, who will do a little rap for us, and we'll talk about tax.
Nope, not even a little bit.
Did you come to a consensus there? Sometimes we have a discussion, and then it's hard for the staff to know what we decided.
That's probably better, I think, Scott, let's kind of give some clarification. I think, because we, my personal opinion, we have a lot on our plate for the fall, I think it's better to, any inquiring that they get, they come to twenty twenty-two, what, exact, consistent with what Kelly? Now, if there's other opinions, but that's what I would propose.
Well, we, we can't vote on anything, okay?
Let me just express our opinion. You know what my opinion is, I just think there should be an exception, yeah.
Anybody have strong views?
I don't have strong views, I think that absolutely focus on those that have gotten theirs in, and the deferments first, and then go from there.
Yeah, I agree.
Way in. Okay. So we have three.
Direction.
Okay, I am not going to rap for you, but we will talk about the rap tax, so.
I tried to rap, but I don't want to be on the little two minutes.
Nope, I don't want to be on it either, so.
Scott, I tried.
Tyler could.
He's more willing than I.
Is that hair green?
Hey, wait, Tyler, was that your niece, or was that your daughter that was here tonight?
Daughter.
She is adorable, so thank you.
And she, she did the pledge like a true Texan.
Okay.
Less fun, sales tax, rap tax. Just brief reminder, point one percent sales tax charged in Highland businesses. We collect between one hundred and thirty-five and one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, depending on what the market does, and if we have a crazy year and everything else. State law is very specific as to what it can fund, cultural, recreational, zoological facilities, and culture, oh, excuse me, botanical, cultural, or zoological organizations. It's got to be approved by the voters, if it is approved, it's good for ten years, and then we have the option to renew it every ten years at that point. And the county did, so if you remember, I don't remember when, a month ago or so, the, the council passed a resolution asking the county, are you going to do a county-wide one? The county's gotten back to us, no, they are not going to, so we can do one citywide. You have a question, Scott?
Well, no, I was just, uh, thinking, I just wanted to clarify, the communities around us that have one, so it's on the ballot in Lehigh, American Fork has one, did we clarify Cedar Hills?
Cedar Hills has one as well.
Okay, so the communities around us have one, Alpine does not.
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, so we've been, the subcommittee, which is composed of, um, Brittany, Kim, Mayor, and I have been meeting, and so here's some kind of thoughts that we've come up with. So our communication plans, we're going to focus on the fact that this would impact every, you know, anyone who shops in Highland, including non-residents. And as you just pointed out, Scott, if, when you go shop in Cedar Hills Walmart, or when you go to American Fork, any of their stores, Walmart there, or anything else, you're paying this already. You're just paying it for a different city.
But they get it, and we don't.
Exactly, it's going to fund their parks, or whatever they've specified it for. And like you said, Lehigh is pursuing, they're planning on having it on their ballot, they haven't formally approved it yet, but that's their intention. Um, some other things that the subcommittee's talked about is the use. One particular item I want to bring up, because this will impact what we do next, is, um, the suggestion from the subcommittee was to limit it to parks and trails only. Not do cultural, essentially eliminate the cultural provision, which would include arts type of things. Uh, the committee's thoughts on this, and please, you're welcome to expound, is that some. some people and some residents might feel that arts should be funded privately, not by government organizations. And so it would be better to just stick to parks and trails and that we would get more community support for that. We, we, as the council is well aware, there are a myriad of projects that could be used for this within the parks. Parks or trails list. Blue Lines put together a capital improvement list for us of all of our parks. When Mountain Ridge is complete, we've talked about adding an additional parks employee that's gonna cost about $80,000 a year. The maintenance for Mountain Ridge costs will, will be about $22,000 a year for phase one, I should say. We could put the money towards the trail plan and move more quickly on that or something else the council decides. And we don't have to get completely specific at this point as to what we would spend this money on. But it will, but what we can spend the money is based on what the ballot question says. So if we say on the ballot, it's only going to recreational stuff, you can't then put it towards arts later. You would have to wait 10 years and then change the ballot question at that point. So what would happen next? What we're intending to do is staff will bring a resolution to you next council meeting on August 3rd. And that would officially tell Utah County that we are putting it on the ballot and it would go forward at that point. That point, it starts a clock where we do a voter information pamphlet, we hold a public meeting, and then the election. And then if, if the tax is approved, because of timing with tax issues, it actually won't go into effect until next April of 2022. So we will see very little of it in this budget year if it was approved. It would really be fiscal year 23. We would start to see the impact of it.
After we get our sales tax, two months in arrears, so we would see one month's, one twelfth. Maybe $10,000.
Yeah, a little bit. So it's really for future years. A couple reminders, and this is true with ballot propositions in general. The city has to be neutral. So if there ends up being a con argument, so that's one of the things we'll have to do with the voter information pamphlet is petition for a con, well, an argument for both sides, but if there ends up being a con argument, we have to give equal time to whoever that is in whatever forum we present, right? So website, public meeting, if we did a video, anything like that. We have to give equal time, equal space. That brings us to the fling booth. So one idea the committee had, which I love in theory, but in talking it over as staff, we're concerned about was the idea was that at the information booth, we would have information about, so at the fling information booth, because council's gonna be there staffed anyway, we would have information about the rap tax and the Wimbledon referendum and Mountain Ridge Park. We're very concerned as staff about the idea of the rap tax and Wimbledon referendum, just because you do have to be neutral if you're in a city, you're in a city space at that point. And so if council accidentally inserts their opinion, then we're, we're potentially breaking the law and frankly, the optics kind of look bad.
I also, I'm worried it's a negative experience at a, at a, at an outdoor event. You're talking about tax and something that's referendum. Where if you're talking about parks, it's fun.
Yeah, you know, so we can talk about Mountain Ridge all you want at the information booth. If you want to talk about Wimbledon and rap and the rap tax, I would, we would, we would suggest getting, paying for a booth. On your own time, you can be there and say whatever you want about those topics.
Well, if I go to a, a, a city event or that, I'm not sure that I want to. I'm there for information about taxes and referendums. That's kinda, what do you think, Brittany? I, I mean, if there's kind of a nice display of, oh, this is our park, this is some ideas and stuff, but I think you do those other things, maybe in information that comes from the, in a neutral way from the staff or just as this is, you know.
Yeah, I agree with you and I think it's hard to, like if we had a council booth, I think it's hard to differentiate what you say at a, a council booth versus a.
And I don't trust the mayor.
I try, I trust the mayor, but I don't, yes, but I don't think it's a.
I don't think, I think Aaron's right.
Yeah.
Now, if somebody comes up and asks you a question, you know, I would say, and you're staffing the booth at that moment, give them factual information and then you can say, if you would like my opinion, let's go take a walk, right? And I can give you my opinion on my own time, but right now I'm.
And I just, it's such a great time to gather people to talk about the park and I think they don't have, they have a limited attention wanting to talk to us when there's something fun to do, so I'd rather talk about the park.
Okay, so we'll focus on having information there about the park.
Good idea.
But, like.
They're gonna have a squirt gun for me, right?
Oh, good heavens, we'll figure something out. But again, on all proposition issues, on your own time with your own resources, council can advocate. Just, we've gotta be careful from what the, what official positions of the city are neutral.
Right.
And again, kind of engaging special interest groups, that's something we talked about, that would need to be council doing that, not staff. Okay, so ultimately I need direction from you guys on two different things tonight. So first would be, at least your initial, and this, I, this might take some time for you to decide on, but what things do you want to put in the, in the ballot language? So, again, the subcommittee said maybe we just limit it to recreational, right? So it says, shall Highland City be authorized to impose this for recreational uses?
That's it.
And so that's an option, or you can include all six of them. It's just up to council what you want to do there. And I guess, this is a hard question. I really don't need an answer tonight, but if you, if you have thoughts on this, I, that would be helpful in the next couple of weeks. Or I can include all of them frankly in the ballot language that I bring to you in a couple of weeks and then you just decide then what you want to strike.
We could do that as we think about. So I just wanna, I've worked, cause I still work a little bit with the friends, the American Fork Library, and they have the rap tax down there. And so different organizations in the city, both library, art, recreation, a lot of different things, basically apply for a grant from the rap tax. And, you know, I think you're probably saying parks and trails maybe from the surveys we've had in the city or or the hope that it would be easier to pass it if we're saying that because it won't become controversial so much, but you know, I'm not sure that, that some people don't consider arts and different things to be kind of recreational too. Do you know what I mean? So I support it for parks and trails, yes, but I'm not sure that we should say you can never use it for anything else. I'm a little uncomfortable with that because there are groups in the city that are very much into arts and other things as well as walking on the trails and that. So I guess I understand what you're saying, cause we have a limited one. It's not like American Fork, they have a lot bigger base. And Lehigh will have a bigger base, so I understand where you're coming from. I just gotta think about it a little bit.
Yeah, and I absolutely agree with you, Scott. It's a balance between, do you think it's more likely to be passed if it's just recreation? But do you wanna lock yourself in for 10 years, right? So if it does get passed, it only goes to recreation.
Groups say gee, you know, I don't know. I think we, I'd like to think about it a little bit.
Can, can we consider putting the language so that we can use it for a wider range of things, but then any like talking points that we have as not a part of council? Right, can talk about the other parts more. Do you know what I mean?
So put everything in, but talk mostly about parks when we do arguments and things like that.
Yeah.
I think that's absolutely okay. So we, the voter information pamphlet, we, the, the city will write the pro, assuming council passes this, right? The city writes the pro argument and so in the argument, we would focus on parks. It would be my thought.
But not limit it in the ballot language.
And so the ballot language would still say cultural facilities and organizations as well, right?
Aaron, I don't, I don't think people like vague language because then they're suspicious. I've had a lot of people talk to me about like a road tax and then they're afraid it's gonna go to something else. I, I agree with Kurt in that we need to be very specific about the language. I mean, it would be nice to leave it a little bit vague.
Well, so the ballot language is exactly this. State statute outlines it. So it'll say, shall Highland City be authorized to impose a 0.1% sales tax and use for? And then essentially those six things I've listed below are the things you can insert or you can take out.
So that's the flexible part.
Yes, those are your only flexibilities really there. You can choose which of those six things you want to include or not include. But then the arguments, we, you know, the voter information pamphlet arguments, right, where we kind of explain more, this is what this is, this is what it's for. I think what Brittany's saying is there we focus on parks essentially in that argument.
Because cultural is pretty broad. It can be interpreted many ways.
Well, the state defines it to try and help us, which it essentially defines it down to arts type things, right? Including like dance and, you know, more performance, performance arts and physical arts. I don't know the right word. I'm sorry. I'm not an arts person, but like painting, that kind of thing.
I'm, you know, what, what Tim's bringing up, let's look what truly happened in Highland. We've had a road fee. We, we did a fee from what I understand at the time, cause they wanna be very concise, that it was gonna go to a fee. Like, like Tim was saying, it wasn't vague, it wasn't going to general fund. We kinda did the same thing with public safety, that they knew exactly where it was going. You know, I, I think the better we can define what we're doing it with, the more chance we have to be successful. If we, though the, and, and so if there's vagueness, it, it gives an opportunity for some who would wonder what we're planning to do. And, and that was, and if culture's what we decide to kind of focus, then we need to say, hey, this, what it means for culture is the, and if we put cultural and recreational now, the zoology, zoological, I'm not sure how we, I don't know where that comes in. I mean, I got, maybe we could do something with botanical. I don't know where that would be at. But I'm just nervous. If we've been down culture and recreational, we'll need to explain what we're meaning that can go to. And, and that can be successful or not. Has there been, I believe, Mayor, there's been other cities that put this on the ballot that did not pass in the past and you know why?
Lehigh did that.
Lehigh's the home of.
Why did they struggle? Was it, did they put down arts? I love the arts. I donate to the arts. I, I, I support it.
Kurt, Kurt supported recreational dancing, as I remember.
I, I did.
Yeah, you did.
That's right.
We used to have them at the Highland Fling, by the way, our dances, so. Mayor, do you know why Lehigh struggled to get theirs passed?
They were, they thought it was gonna pass and then somebody.
Yeah, there was one individual who had a ton of time on their hands and they like, they weren't even the official person. Nobody officially had a con argument, but this person just did a lot of work and of a con, don't pass this and people listened to this individual.
It's a tax. It's easy to go, you're increasing taxes. Don't do it. We have to almost start on that way. Don't do it. Now, why are we doing it? I think that's what we gotta explain. Why are we doing this? Cause we shouldn't be doing a tax increase. Why are we doing it?
So let me just do a quick pause here. If there's anybody that needs to take a break while we're having this discussion, permission granted.
Thank you. He could tell. So are we taking a five, 10 minute break?
Well, we can continue to discuss while they're breaking.
Oh. It's just a discussion. I'm kinda sure it will, I need to.
All right, then we are on an official five minute break.
Official five minute break?
Yeah, official five minute break.
Was that a fun rap tax?
Uh, uh.
I did not even imagine that.
Yeah.
Mayor, you gotta give me a minute, I, we dropped our audio.
That's what we decided, I know.
Okay, now I really don't know what's happening.
So, we're in the meeting twice, looks like.
Yep, I don't know how that happened, okay.
That's okay, that doubled our viewership.
We are kind of low, and we were at one point at six tonight on YouTube, and now we're down to three, so it's, it's ongoing well.
Well, thank you, three that are still with us. Um, you're, you're to be commended. All right, so where we left off, Kurt was waxing eloquently about the rap tax, and why, why Lehigh lost when they did, and that's kind of where we cut things off.
So, so Mayor, the concern, and I'll just, I, anytime I, as I read this, and if I was on the council to understand what's going, anytime we see we're imposing and increasing a tax, I think it's hard for residents to, to see and, and say yes, unless it's educational. So, I just think we got to be careful, money is that we educate them, so they understand what's happening with it. I, so I would just be careful on what wording we add. Anything, you know, if we get too long, it could distract that...
Well, there's the, we've got those, we, that's a specific language, right?
Right.
That's, that's required to be used in the, so, we can take stuff away from that, but we can't add anything. Now, we, we can have our own pro, this is, this is what we're going to do with the money if we get it, and talk about the types of things that we could use it for. For example, um, we would use part of it to fund the additional personnel to help maintain, uh, Mountain Ridge Park. Um, we could say, um, we could build extra pickleball, or we could add another amenity.
So, that's all recreational. What would we, if we put down cultural, what would be some suggestions?
Um, you could help fund the Arts Council with it, um, you know, help fund some of the, let any loan to do other programs at no cost, or what?
Our survey gave us some surprising information. We had some people that actually said, even if we had someone donate the building for a, a community center, they were still against it. You, you, I'm just saying, we've got to be a little careful. We have a survey that appears, once again, I, I, I love, you, the Arts Council, I'm there, I support, I go to the place, I just worry by adding that one aspect, and it's just maybe my thought, that could be someone that pulls back away, and we saw that in some surveying.
Um, a fair point, and to be truthful, if we're going to get a hundred and sixty K a year to, let's say, in, in, in five years, it's two fifty K a year, right? That, there are things we can do in our park every year that can burn for that money.
Would take a lot of money, yeah.
Um, and because this can be used for both operational and, and capital stuff, if we have a need for something else...
Correct, then you could allocate that to the general fund.
We could allocate that as an independent decision. Um, so, I, I, and then that was one that you were counted before, because we make it, and we say we're going to do this. Um, I, uh, my personal view is, in this case, I think narrower is better, but I think it's something that we can be thoughtful about. I, it doesn't have to be decided tonight, so.
Right, but I think you're right, Mayor. I think narrower is better, because we're not going to get the funds like a, a big city like Lehigh and staff, so you have a small amount of funds, we have some big needs in the parks and trails, let's focus on that. And, um, I, I think you're making a good argument.
So, what I'm hearing, as we're, we're doing this thing now, to confirm, staff's hearing what you're saying, um, what I'm hearing is, uh, councils looking to, um, narrow it to only, say, essentially recreational facilities.
That's right, but I could, I could support a zoo for the deer and the mountain goats.
Okay.
So, we'd have a mountain goat pen as, as an amenity living point.
If anyone else, if any other council members have, you know, think differently over the next couple of weeks, let me know, but the intention is I will bring it back with just that language at this point, so. We've got a couple of weeks to think about it. And then I guess my last question for you, council, is there anything else you need, any other information you feel like you need before you can make the decision as to whether or not this goes on the ballot? Let me know in the next couple of weeks.
I like that it, I, I like that it goes on the ballot, because then residents get to make a choice. And we just, we just need to be clear on, on what they would be getting with this, and then it's their choice, and they will have spoken, so I kind of...
In the material, I think we need to emphasize the fact that other people will be coming in the community donating to this, which will help us.
Yes.
And, and I think that's kind of a selling point. I'd also think we need to clarify what point one percent means for people.
Right.
So, you know, point one percent is kind of seems like a lot for some people, but if you have an example, it would be helpful.
Yeah, I think it, one cent for every dollar, I think is what it works out to be if I...
One cent for every ten dollars.
Ten, excuse me, ten dollars, thank you, yes. One cent for every ten dollars, so, yes, I, I agree, that should be in the language.
It just needs to be kind of clarified.
For the argument.
Yeah.
So, a dime, if you spend a hundred dollars, you're donating a dime.
Mm-hmm.
A dime. And, so if you're here using our splash pad, and you go shop at Macy's or Myers, and you're not from Highland, but you're contributing to the splash pad, in theory, right?
Yeah, absolutely, I'm sure that would fall under recreational.
Yep.
Facility. Okay, that's all for me, um, so let me know in the next couple of weeks if you have any other questions, and we'll chat about this again on August third.
All right, um, okay, park maintenance building, Andy.
All right, can we go to the next slide? So, Mayor and council, you will recall that as part of the budget, we funded a parks, uh, maintenance building. Um, it's been discussed that that would go just north of the community center, uh, located there at 10400 and SR-74. Um, what we've been entertaining is a metal structure, uh, that would be placed, uh, and, and the addition to the site would look like what's in color, so the, uh, building would be the, the light gray square on your screen, and, uh, the parking facilities would be the darker gray areas. Um, this area is largely unfinished, I, I mean, un, unbuilt right now, it's just kind of a native area. Um, there are a number of trees that would have to be removed to, to facilitate this. Um, one of the items that, uh, we wanted to discuss with the council is, uh, on the, uh, original subdivision plot, when this was created, there was a fifty-foot setback on that subdivision plot, uh, along SR-74. Um, our current code would require a thirty-foot setback. Uh, right now, this is laid out honoring that fifty-foot setback, it also aligns with the eastern wall of the existing community center. Uh, you'll see that that, uh, what we've got is we connect between the community center and the proposed building with a solid fence, essentially a concrete, one of the precast concrete fences, and then, uh, uh, we have the building wall that would be exposed, and then, and then we continue with the fence there. If we were to, uh, you know, so, from an aesthetic standpoint, there's one element that says that extension of the existing wall, uh, you know, is a nice line to hold there, but you'll notice that the, uh, highway continues to, you know, drift away from, uh, the building line in that case. And so if we were to, uh, look at it under our current code, and put the building at a thirty-foot setback, it increases our ability to maximize the yard, um, which will have a lot of value, because in order to get into this facility, we're going to have trucks and trailers that are going to have to navigate this area, uh, to be able to back into the, into the proposed shop. So, we wanted to get some feedback there. Um, the other thing that we want to talk about is what we're proposing for the aesthetics of the building. Um, so while it will be a metal building, we've met with a contractor and come up with, uh, a plan to, uh, have the SR-74 side of the building, uh, be brick in appearance. So, it wouldn't be brick, uh, but they're, they can do these days, it's, it's the commercial stucco, it's called eaves. You can do that in a way that it will look like brick, and so we can replicate the, the band that's on the existing building, we can replicate the brick look from that side, so when you drive past, um, you would still see the metal roof, because it would pitch towards, uh, seventy-four in the center, um, but we'll do a darker metal roof, so it replicates the dark, dark roof on the community center, but then the brick would replicate, uh, on that side of the building. So, it would help blend into the existing site a little bit more, maybe, uh, you know, be a little softer on the eyes, so to speak. The, the other three sides of the building would all be the metal, um, but it would complement, uh, you know, it would be the, the, the cream color that's the, the existing fascia, and, and kind of some of the accents on that building, so we would try to complement that aesthetic as much as possible. The yard would be fenced in, uh, you can see the fence, uh, and the gates, I don't have control of the, oh, yeah, thank you, whoever's highlighting that, so like, there, there would be a fence line there to, uh, segregate it as far as the area that would be closed to public, because just of security and, and ensuring that, uh, you know, uh, kids, et cetera, don't get into the yard where we'll have various, you know, it would, most of our storage will be in the building, but they could have access to, you know, things that would, would, we wouldn't want them to have access to as far as for their safety. Um, so this is our general layout where we are, uh, today with it. Um, uh, we have been working with a contractor, uh, right, right now, uh, to, uh, one, one thing you may remember, um, is that part of the proposal is to, uh, cut an access into the basement of the community center, um, so the parks operations would be in the basement. Um, the, the kind of dark line that, uh, heads out of, uh, on, on the, on the far, uh, east side of that, uh, parking area, is representing a sidewalk, yeah, right there, that would go into the basement, uh, and then the basement of the, a, a good portion of the basement of the community center would be the parks operation offices. Um, so, including cutting in that entry, and then just looking at the building and some of the basic fencing, um, right now, we're working with a contractor, the estimate, uh, the working estimate, and this isn't a final estimate, but a working estimate, is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that, uh, those elements. Um, so in the budget, there's, uh, three hundred thousand dollars in the current budget, uh, so we will be looking at a budget adjustment for this. Um, that does not include all of the site work, that's just getting us into the building. Um, the site work i- is another, uh, you know, about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on top of that. Um, uh, so, all total, um, right now, we're looking at about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand if we were to build the picture, you know, that we see here, um, in total. Um, so it's, it's probably, uh, something that we'll have to, you know, phase a little bit over two years, but, uh, we are looking to move forward with the building and, and, and initial phasing plan to get us in and operating, um, so that one of the main motivations is that we can optimize, uh, the, uh, staff's time, and that right now, you'll recall, we're renting two storage units, uh, in American Fork, and there is time spent going back and forth, and there's also the expense of the monthly allotment, which is significant, because they are large units. Um, so we, we are looking to get out of that, uh, rental payment as soon as possible. Uh, that being said, um, we're very interested in your comments on the setback, and any questions that you have, uh, as we look to take next steps here at this site, and, and continue to work towards, uh, breaking ground.
Good question for Nathan on the setback. Um, Chad Copier, the one immediately north there, a number of years ago, wanted to build a fence, and we told him no. Was it the thirty-foot or the fifty-foot?
He wanted a fence long seventy-four.
So, he wanted it, and we just said, how close did he want it to seventy-four? Like right, like, like, uh...
Into the sidewalk, if I remember correctly.
Like Adamson has on the other side of the street. Anyway, Jess Adamson, his fence is right up against the cur, the side.
Yeah, he was grandfathered in or something, yeah.
Um, because it's an older home, but he, uh, going to thirty wouldn't, wouldn't be inconsistent with what we've, we've told Chad in the past, is, I just wanted to make sure, if we went to thirty...
What, what's our Parkway detail around that?
One, one second, let me get to that for a second. The, the challenge with, with Chad at the time, and even today, is the setback for a fence. He, it, he couldn't meet it, so we had to change the code to meet the setback, and we were trying to, um, we were trying to create a standard that applied to, uh, subdivision, uh, that was built around when he did, and he didn't like that.
So, and it wasn't thirty, thirty feet?
Didn't have to do with thirty feet or anything, no.
Fifty feet, okay. I just...
Because that's a building setback.
Yeah. Oh, it's his, his setback, okay.
Now, his, his thirty feet, then? And, he, he has a fence setback.
He gets a huge burn.
Yeah, that was, that was already there. It was a fence setback, it had nothing to do with buildings.
Okay.
So, but we could build a fence along the thirty-foot?
No.
So, if, if we went with the thirty-foot setback?
Yeah.
Would you push, would you make the building on an angle then?
No.
We'd still orient the building, uh, perpendicular to the parking areas, because it'd be a little trickier to back into the building, you know, so we want to keep the building perpendicular to our drive areas, but what we would do is we would angle the fence, you know, because, because this whole plan's designed about, around, uh, uh, cordoning off the, uh, parks building area, so we would, we would shift the building to the right on your screen, uh, you know, twenty feet, and then we'd angle the fence between the, uh, you know, the existing building and that building, and then...
And then go straight north?
Go, go straight north from there. Um, it would give us another twenty feet of mobility, which would make a big difference in, in the yard and the function of the yard. Um, so we, we wanted to give you this picture, because this would be the most, uh, you know, the smallest...
Would we need to take out additional trees then?
Uh, we believe we could do it, uh, without impacting, um, many of the trees. There is one tree that, depending on how we transition that fence, m- one additional tree might be impacted. You can see it on your screen, I have a hard time seeing it on the big screen, I'm looking at my screen, and, uh, you know, if you envision that fence kind of angling through there, it might have, impact one additional tree.
That one there, okay.
We could maybe, we could maybe, uh, work on avoiding it if we could with the fence, but, uh, the, the idea that we've been working on lately is to, uh, have the fences, uh, have the, the edge of the, the, the side of the building visible from the, from the street, have the aesthetics of the building, and then, uh, you know, have the fences connect to the buildings, just so that we don't have kind of a, uh, trapped trash area slash weed area between a fence and a building, that always ends up being the nuisance storage that we probably don't need anyway. So, we, you know, keep the aesthetics, uh, for, for the view on the roadway.
So, on the north end, um, if you moved to the east twenty feet, would you do another f- because right now, there's a fence on the north side, right? Chad has a fence there?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of, we, we would replace that fence.
We would replace that fence.
Yeah, we would replace that fence, because his, his fence isn't really all that secure.
Okay.
So, we, we would want to replace it. The idea that we've been working with to date was, uh, uh... The idea that we've been working with to date was going with a solid fence, at least until we got, you know, to a certain point where we, we felt we could transition to an open fence. Still evaluating where that transition would occur, but we'd want to be good neighbors to him too, you know? But I, I think from a security standpoint, we'd want to replace that fence on the north.
Okay. I, I think there's some really good ideas here. I was just curious why you wouldn't want this metal building to look like the metal blue house of the street.
Well, actually, I've been told that, that, that that is a gorgeous house inside.
Well, I've not seen it, has it?
Yeah, yeah, so it does look like a more of a traditional, you know, metal structure, you know, and, and, you know, whether you like it or don't, you know, it looks like a.
Yeah, I get a lot of questions about that, about setting that code.
Yeah, but, yeah, I don't, I don't know, I've been in there personally. But I, you know, the, the idea behind doing the, the east side to look like the existing building was just to do our best to kind of mesh with the campus and yet we're, we're trying to work with the metal structure because the economics of matter. Council probably remembers that we had a, a building laid out and the bid came back at 1.3 million and if we were to build that today, just an estimate, we're up about 1.6, you know, with the way costs have gone. So this is coming in.
At half.
Half of that, you know, which is, half is more than we would have liked to spend, but half is better than a whole, you know, in that regard.
So, so Andy, we have a, there's a subdivision, just if you go down that road, probably two blocks, it's by a church, it's just a little cul-de-sac. Is there a parkway detail there? Is it just 30-foot setback? Is that?
Yeah.
If someone came in right now and they were up along this, are we saying they only need to come 30 feet and have a parkway detail there along the road?
The 30-foot is to the structure. The parkway detail is usually 29 feet and that's off curbs. So usually you have the 29-foot parkway detail, then we'll have the fence and then usually there's an additional, you know, 10 or 15-foot setback, I can't remember what it is there. So this would be, this would be similar to the, you know, the fence location of the parkway detail, you know, where you see the fence, not necessarily to where you, you would see like on those homes. I, I don't know the exact dimension on that, but our standard parkway detail is 29 feet. So we're proposing 30 feet.
You're talking about those ones there?
Yeah.
And that's, that looks like a, doesn't look like a 50-foot setback. What's the measurement on that?
Yeah, we, we went up and down and the 50-foot setback appears to be, you know, maybe something that it was an idea when this first subdivision went in because this subdivision was pretty old, but if you go up and down the road, there's not many 50-foot setbacks.
So coming back to Chad Copier, if he came and asked to put a fence there that was 30 feet back, would that meet code for him today in his subdivision or would he have to be 50 feet back? Does that make sense? Because on the city property, we can be 30, but Chad next door has to be 50?
Kurt, the, the 50 is a building setback referenced on the plot, not a fence.
If Chad came in right now, where could he build his fence at?
30 feet from the back of the curb.
So that, is that what we're saying?
What they're proposing to do is to move it to 30 feet and.
Back of the curb.
Yeah. This is showing up 50, we're proposing that we'd like to move it to, to 30.
So the building setback that, that we're proposing is 30 feet from the property line?
That's what our code is currently, right?
Yes.
Now, as we go through, are we adding parking spaces here? I mean, I know there's going to be some new asphalt, you know, so we have, this is our community center. I guess I want to understand, I, I, I see how you're kind of.
Getting a few more parking spots for the community center, which is a benefit.
Yeah, back there and then you're probably adding there, right?
Yeah. The areas, all the areas that you see the parking stalls in yellow on the screen are, are additional parking stalls beyond what we have there today.
Now, if you go down a little bit further, are we getting a second entrance onto 10-4?
Yes, and there is a second entrance proposed.
Okay, that was the other, other thing. So you have.
Circulation is going to be a little bit better.
And so the, the circulation will be a little better for people to get in and out?
Yeah.
What offices, I mean, and if we're getting too far ahead, it's not decided, but what offices downstairs are you thinking of taking?
So there would be one room that would be left for storage, for the arts, arts.
The art or is there, there's the historical society down there too?
There's going to be, so I'll get to both paths. So the, the eastern portion would be separated, meaning the, the historical society access would be through that door that's kind of the glass door that's on the, on the far east. They would have, I believe it's a couple rooms that they'll have access to there. And then there would be the, the hard division, so to speak, for the parks and art storage and the arts would have one storage area and then basically the rest of the basement would be for the parks operations.
We actually have one storage room that will be for events as well.
And there would be an events as well. Okay, I'm still learning some of the.
Then downstairs, there's a big classroom. Are you taking the classroom also and then the, and then you're taking, you're taking the classroom and the entryway that's downstairs?
Yeah, the entryway is still, we're still figuring it out whether we take that or not, but, you know, the functional area of downstairs would all be, you know, basically between the, the storage for arts and events and, and parks would be, the public wouldn't have access to those areas. The only areas where the public would have access to would be where the historical, historical society would have those couple rooms on the far east.
So the arts council, you're saying, has to move everything upstairs? I mean, they'd have storage, but there's no classrooms to teach anything downstairs?
Right, right.
Are you taking space away from the historical society? I like it down there.
No.
No, other than they at times have stored some stuff in the kitchen and they're not going to be able to do that anymore. And we have talked about this plan with Shawna and Charlie and, oh, Symphony, John Pugh as well and.
Charlie's good?
I'm sorry?
Charlie is good with it?
Yes, yeah.
No, I think, because there, I mean, once we start getting, you know, now we're pushing some uses that were downstairs, all upstairs, that starts to, you know, come fine, we're going to have to look at some users that.
No, Shawna, I mean, I, they're fine with it. I mean, Shawna is.
Shawna's always been very workable.
She is, you know, and so she's just made a way to make it work and just, we, we actually stopped reserving it downstairs because we actually were kind of hoping we'd be there this year. So they haven't had access to that since we really started reserving again.
So then upstairs, there's also some storage. So you have where the old council chambers is at or where they have all their things. Then you have some rooms in the back. Is any of that storage and who's going to have that?
It's staying as it is. So the Symphony has one room and the Arts Council has the larger room that's kind of behind the stage.
We'll have to, I mean, the Symphony is an outside organization, outside of something that the, the city sponsors, so we're going to have to look at, look at that because they, you know, they're, they're using one night and they're using some storage and we'll have to look at some issues there.
There are a lot of community members that participate too.
Yeah, it's pretty popular. I think this is a great plan, but I'd go to the 30-foot setback and then expand your area a little bit.
Yeah, our, our mobility, our function will increase dramatically by that 20 feet.
I just want to understand the budget of this a little bit better. So what did we have allocated before for this and now what are we proposing and then where are we going to get those increased expenses from?
So there, there is sufficient funds right now in the cap, building capital fund, there's $830,000. Now, only 330, 300 of that was in the budget for the parks building because going in, we weren't exactly sure what this was going to cost, et cetera. So right now, if we just do the building, the access to the basement and a few of the key fences, we're about $450,000. It's likely that we need to do some of this asphalt, so we're probably going to come back with a proposal to the council to, you know, fund somewhere on the order of 550 to 600,000, something in that range, so that we can do some of the key asphalt areas, maybe leave some outside of the fence, et cetera, for, for, you know, another budget year. But try to get the, the building and the core site work that's inside the fence operational. We're honing in on that phasing and, and that's part of why we wanted to talk to the council tonight about, okay, well, what's our comfort level with, you know, a, a budget change in that way? We, we've at least got to get to the point where we can build the building and, and, you know, have that area secure.
Was that whole amount earmarked for the parks maintenance building or is there anything else that we had it earmarked for?
So of that, we have 300 that came from the exaction fees that we're being reimbursed or is our portion for our contribution here to the infrastructure, should say, infrastructure reimbursement. The other came from contributions over time from when it hadn't snowed as much. We put money in there for this purpose and when we, with each budget year, if we had excess over that 25%, we were transferring money in there as directed by the council to build that for this building.
So hold, okay, I'm a little confused here. What accounts this, this extra money has been sitting in?
Building capital.
So we have a building capital account that has an extra 500,000 in it? And what was it ever earmarked for?
For this, the salt building and this building.
Okay, that, it wasn't 500,000, we had 300,000 for the park maintenance building.
Correct.
Okay, and we've already built our salt storage buildings, we took money out.
Yep.
What was this other 500,000? What was it, I mean?
For this, for this parks building, remember, we've always said it's going to talk, cost about 600, 700 and then we got the cost for the, for that building at Mountain Ridge and it was 1.3. And we're like, we don't have another 700.
So once again, let's go through where the funds came. It came from exaction fees from Town Center?
Right.
Is that, and what's that?
That's 300.
Okay, but what was that originally supposed to be used for? If we exacted for it, what was?
It was, okay, so it was for the parks building specifically.
Okay.
Okay, because the trade was the debt that we owed WPI, okay? Because we sold the building up here, right? So we got the debt, so that freed up the money collected for, basically out of Toscana, for the infrastructure reimbursement. That's where that came from.
So.
Allowed us to replace that building at 300.
And I think it's good to understand this, but this is a billing we absolutely need and, and since the first of the year, the price of gas and fuel has almost doubled and aren't you hauling all the, allow this maintenance stuff? I mean, you have to store it in American Fork and, and things. I mean, you're probably keeping it up at the maintenance building over there.
And now it's at the shop, right.
But it'd be good to have things more centralized because, I mean, I'm paying four bucks a gallon now.
How much does it cost for those storage units? You, you said that if we had a storm during the winter, what was, you said it was high, you have a, I mean, you have hide and hideaway, so I imagine it's just, they'd go in there in the fall and stay all the way till spring. What would be the cost?
A thousand dollars per month.
So we could either go pay 850, I understand we need to build, I'm at, or a thousand dollars a month. I mean, it wasn't astronomical. I mean, I heard it was this astronomical fee, you know, you could put 850 in a bank and almost get that thousand, so I just, okay. Yeah, because this is starting to come in a lot more than what we anticipated. I mean, it's, and I agree, costs keep increasing.
Yeah, it is and, yeah, we, that's, that's where we've been working with, a contractor to really hone in on the budget and, and yet find that balance between the, the budget and the aesthetics and the use and, you know, we've been, been working to find that perfect balance. We think we're getting close, but I wish it was half the cost. I'd, I'd feel better if it was half the cost, but it isn't and so we're just trying to find a way to, to fund what we've got to do in that regard.
So Tyler, just once again, when we'd go look at our budget sheets that we approved, we'd have a 800 or $500,000 that was there saving towards capital improvements towards parks. Is that where we'd see it in our budget?
Yes. It won't be, it won't show up on the budget itself, but on the balance sheet there, so what that money is in the fund. But as Andy indicated, the, the current budget, we, you have approved up to $300,000.
I just don't remember ever seeing this type of amount there in the budget. I mean, it just, I, I just get, these are the type of, the, the funds are sitting out there, they go, what do we have? And also it's like magical, we find something. I just.
It is magical, yeah. Tyler, could you give me like a, just a two-second primer on exaction fee versus impact fee?
That's me. Go ahead. So when, two different things. When, when Town Center was built, developers got together and came together to build the infrastructure in this area. Exaction fee, think of it as an infrastructure reimbursement fee, that's what it is.
We have to pay it back.
We, we got together, city had a portion, everybody came together and said, okay, we'll pay each other back as this is developed. Impact fee is future growth on the infrastructure overall.
Right. That's what I understood, yeah.
Thank you.
Just, so clarifying, so we approved a 27% budget, that's what we wanted to keep in our reserves. Are you seeing anything over the 27% was going with this, this capital fee or this, this count? What's, if we have money over that 27%, where does it go?
So Nathan referred to accurately that some of the balance in this fund comes from previous years where the general fund was going to exceed 25% at the time. So the 27, we're talking about now, nothing of that amount or needing to exceed that 27% is currently intended to, to be transferred to this capital account. As the state has increased the, the threshold up to 35%, that's quite a bit of real estate before we would have to make a transfer. Council certainly can opt to, we have $248,000 that was, was intended for SurePlus to make up that 27%. Council could allocate other funds, but there is no de facto transfer that would occur that's currently planned for the fiscal year 22 budget.
So in the last, I think, three, excluding this one, I think the previous three, two or three, the council would make a motion at the end, sometime in June, to say, if when we get to the end of the year, we have something over 25%, then it can go into a capital fund. And, and so, so this is where that rolled into.
Yeah, and we've always just kept it at 25 anyway.
Another point, Kurt, your questions there are, are good. We've talked about doing some fund analysis to kind of describe the, where funds have come from, what things were and the intended uses were. I spent some time, as we've been discussing this evening, going through the history of that fund account by account and looking at line item by line item. And it's, it's a, a story that we'll look forward to telling in greater detail, but I see exactly where you're coming from and then there's a lot of pieces, lots of different accounts that contribute to that fund balance. It's not just one source of funding, so your line of questioning is appropriate and it's kind of fun to look into, so.
Relative, relative to the expense, I know it's significant, but I've appreciated the support from the council in that everyone seems to generally, generally acknowledge that this is something we have to do, we need to do, and this appears to be the best and most straightforward way to accomplish the need for the least amount of money. While, while it is expensive, this is probably where we're going to get our needs met, you know, for the, for the, the most reasonable budget. So if there are any other guidance you'd like to give us, we'd love to hear it. Otherwise, we plan to keep taking steps forward towards, towards bringing you, you know, construction contracts, et cetera, you know, final, you know, design documents, you know, to, to work towards the construction.
So let me see if I understand. You're playing on redoing the plan and going to the 30-foot easement, which gives you a little more room in there.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we have one other discussion item that's not on the agenda per se, but I think Tyler has an ARPA update for us.
We do.
I don't know.
Hot off the presses. So wanted to give you an, an update and had some information we received from the state this morning. So we applied for the city of Highland to receive ARPA funds to the state, receiving those funds from the state. We applied as soon as that, that window opened up here about a month ago and we have received our first tranche of approximately 1.1 million dollars. That's in our account. The city has until the end of 2024 to, to obligate those funds and until the end of 2026 to suspend those funds. We planned to, to have additional discussion. There is an opportunity to receive matching funds from the state and the information we received just this morning puts a, a little bit of a short window on that opportunity. The, the application to the state, that portal will open up here on August 16th. So that is. So, that is, if you're counting the number of council meetings between now and that time, there's one, our next council meeting. The criteria for the applications that they'll go through to, for this matching opportunity have yet to be determined and published. The application has yet to be...
Up anywhere. There's fifty million, though, in grant money that GOPB has that we can apply for, but there are no requirements yet.
Right.
Oh, so this is, we wanted to get like the two point, two point, two point three.
This is separate.
This is that we can apply for other money.
Grant.
And, but we don't know what we, what we're applying for.
But it has to match what we're spending on, right? So, if we're building, if we're using the money to put in meters, then it would just be more meters. Or if we're using the money to put sewer in, it would be more sewer. In this case, we're looking at using the money to put in park, and this would mean more park, correct?
So, we, we could even have enough money to move quite a ways on this park then. So, how much do you think, I mean, we get the 1.1, and we can apply for more. I mean, what's your recommendation? I mean, we don't know the specifics.
All right, so we will, we'll begin immediately asking the league. There's a committee of folks that will redo these applications. So, we're going to ask for clarification on their criteria. Right now, the criteria is they're looking for a return on investment. So, that's, that's pretty wide open. So, we'll enlist help from the mayor as well and any other connections that we might have to ask folks in the know what that criteria might be. Because here in two weeks, when the council meets again, our intent is to bring to you any information we have and then seek your approval to, to apply for these matching funds. At that point, if we don't know anything more, then it's the park or whatever the council decides that we want to apply for. There is a timeline they've, they've published where the successful applicants and funds would be dispersed to those applicants around mid-November. So, if the city applies for and is not successful in receiving matching funds, we still have plenty of runway to, to still spend the money that's, that we've received from the federal government, even if the state does not disperse any of it, of this allotment to.
So, as a council member, I think, I always think if it sounds too good to be true, it may not. I'd just like to see some of the stipulations too.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, if there's lots of stipulations and red tape, it might be a problem if they start coming back and saying, you're going to use it for da-da-da-da. I'd just like to know more detail about it.
Yeah, and to your point, Scott, right there, our obligations are to report annually to the federal government. And the state is prohibited from tacking on a lot of additional requirements. Right. If we are then receiving funds from the state, are we indirectly subjecting ourselves to a lot of other requirements? That remains to be seen based on what comes back from state.
I know, I'm close to, but I'd like to know what all the little stipulations are going to be too, because it may tie our hands in a lot of things. I mean, the state's been really good this year to change all of our codes. And, and so, I kind of like to just kind of get an idea of what else comes with this. Like, they may say, I mean, I'm just throwing this out, but they may say, you've got to have a lot of high-density housing in your city to get this. You know, I just like to know what they're, you know, and you don't know either, but I sure like to know what it is.
We'll be happy to share, and there's a couple of documents that they, the league and the governor's office are planning on distributing this morning. I'm making sure those with you. Not a whole lot of information, but it does provide that timeline. And you'll know what we know at this point. But again, we'll immediately begin making phone calls and, and as much as we can, trying to get clarification from what the state's looking for here.
Tyler, I can, I can call GOPB, the director. I'll text her tomorrow and ask what the requirements are.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thanks, Kim, because it'd be nice to know.
Yeah, I do have an in there.
Yes.
One, one thing we do hear a lot of is disadvantaged communities, things like that, which will make it a challenge for us.
So, there's your stipulations coming in, yeah, of them.
Okay.
Which could make it a challenge.
Anything else that any council member wants to inject before we entertain a motion to adjourn? I have, I have one item. Okay, and it won't be very long. I attended a few weeks ago a two-day seminar put on by the trust. That's the people that insure us. I talked to a couple people about this already. It was, it was a training done by the arbiter group on working with others, team building, et cetera. It's really good training. The head of the trust, the president of the trust, offered to hold a special session in his building. It's in North Salt Lake, for one day, at no cost to us. And he needs at least a month's notice to prepare, because you get a little kit with some books in it. And I think that it's a really good, good training. It's useful. It's called the outward mindset. And, and so, you go over, they give you two books, Leadership and Self-Deception, and then the outward mindset. You spend days, you break into small working groups during the day. So, I, I think it would make sense to do, to schedule it in September sometime. Scott, Thursdays are better for you, right?
Thursdays are best for me, thank you.
So, if there is a Thursday, I think Brittany, or you said sixteenth wouldn't work. Does anybody know when the league conference is in September? I don't remember the dates. I just tried to look it up, and I didn't find it. But if you could give me a list of Thursdays that don't work for you in September, I'll work with the trust guy, we'll get it set up. It'll be, he'll provide lunch. We'll just have to drive up there, and it's a really, really great... And I, one thing I'm a little bit remiss with myself is I think in a future where I might want to do this, that we ought to use work sessions occasionally just to do training on how do we do our jobs better? Just general purposes, how do we work with each other better? How do we work with residents better? Not open space or something else. And so, I thought this could be a nice kickoff to something that we could maybe do on a quarterly basis to just take a work session and talk about what's working, what's not, what can we do better? But this is, this would give us a framework to have a language that we could all talk about together. And then going forward, you know, new people can, they hold this training about once a year, I think. So, any council member?
I like the idea, and I'm free all the Thursdays in September except for one. And I've got to double check, because there's a board meeting for the USDC, but they move it in September, because they have a conference or during the month. So, I'll check on an email.
Just email or text me.
Okay.
And then I will, I'll let you know what date looks like it works for everybody, and then we'll get it scheduled. And then I'd like some of staff to come too. I think that would be useful.
I'm all for it. If I can learn how to work with Scott better, then I'll do whatever it takes.
And maybe they'll teach Scott how to finally listen to me.
Are you, are you, Scott, that one or that one?
Are you assuming that I may be on the council past the first of the year?
Oh, you're right, you're right.
You may not have to learn that, but you're with me. Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Is there, so second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See, we're in agreement there.
We are adjourned.